I don't know.
Realize that was so small.
Yeah.
Put extra out there. And then we thought, well, it's just for a little more important. That's right. For the ones who needed some. Yeah.
Is that? It's it's close enough. British Land County. Not not a lot.
That's possible. He's so young.
Brazil.
I guess he came up online, not knowledge, man.
Call the meeting of this Cheney City Council to order. Could we please do the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic at which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberately determined, for all.
Thank you. Um, roll call, please, and thank you.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Overhauser.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Present.
Councilmember Bartels.
Present.
Councilmember Wiseman.
Yeah.
Councilmember Guard.
Present.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Posthuma.
Here.
Um, is this where you do this? That's what I thought. We have a request for absence by Teresa Overhouse, Councilwoman, not Mayor Pro Tem, but Councilwoman Overhauser for December twenty-sixth.
Nope.
To approve.
Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not even asked for a post. Thank you. Um, citizen comments, if there's anyone who would like to ask or comment on anything this evening, this is the time. Do, yes, please come up.
Hello, my name is Corina Donnerburn, twenty-two twenty Annie Clay. Uh, my comment today is about one of the information items today, measure one for Spokane County. Um, I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering, I didn't see anything in the FAQ about how much revenue they're expecting this tax to generate, uh, to generate over the thirty-year period. So that would be super helpful to know, and I'm curious why that wasn't included. Um, wondering how much Cheney will get. It sounded like there was some money that's divvied up amongst towns and cities. And then also, has there been any conversation about how Cheney would use that money? Um, I don't believe that this is a helpful measure, um, in terms of, we don't know how much, we know that they're gonna pay for the new jail. We don't know how much that will cost. We don't know how much there will be raised by the tax in general. And while there are other items that potentially could be paid for, such as behavioral health coresponders, there's no commitment to pay for those things. There's no real commitment to anything other than this kind of understanding that it's definitely gonna be used to pay for a new jail. And I'm not sure that downstream service is what our community most needs instead of investment in infrastructure and housing and jobs and mental health services and chemical dependency treatment. Yes, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Corina, and I might just ask you, when they come to make the presentation, I might, uh, ask you to just ask them those questions directly because.
I'd be happy.
I don't think we know those things either.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to make public comment or ask any questions? And the final, anyone else wanting to ask questions? All right. Public comment period is over, and I think our gentleman from the count, the, yes, would you like to settle in and give your presentation now? We, we, um, I, by the way, I'm, I meant to mention the council. I was gonna just, rather than make him wait through our agenda, we were gonna put him up front, which is, I think, usually the polite and appropriate thing to do, so. Uh, I think, Mark, if you would like to introduce our guest, that would be wonderful.
So, uh, we have Pat Bell with the county. He's, uh, gonna be presenting tonight on, uh, measure number one. Um, I'm just queuing up your, your presentation here. Hang on.
For the mayor.
And you're good to go.
Thank you, thanks, Mark. Okay, good evening, uh, council members. Thanks for hosting me. I'm Patrick Bell, Communications Director for Spokane County, and tonight I'm here to talk about measure one, the law and justice proposal for Spokane County. I'm here on behalf of, uh, Commissioner Al French, who couldn't make it, and our, uh, a couple other officials, undersheriff Richie sent his regrets. He had a, a personal issue he had to deal with tonight. Um, so I'm gonna briefly go through some of these presentation slides. I will save you the video, which you can watch on your own time. It won't take five minutes, but the video is very educational. It's also very comprehensive. It goes through all of the elements of what measure one can fund, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. So, uh, as we get into it, um, I'm sure a number of you have heard, seen, read, or heard something about measure number one. What is it? It's a sales and use tax. It's two-tenths of one percent. The graphic there does a good job of describing it. That's two cents on ten dollars in purchases. Uh, retail sales are included, is countywide. It's not just city of Spokane, it's not just one municipality, and it will be on the November seventh ballot, so ballots are already out. I'm here tonight to educate on measure one, not to advocate, but if anybody has specific questions on council or in the audience, I'd be happy to try and address those. Sixty percent of the revenue from measure one will go to Spokane County. That's because in the state law, RCW's revised code of Washington, county has responsibility for providing county jail services. So the county is the landlord for the jail. That's located on the downtown campus, but also we have a facility at Geiger, which is nineteen fifty-three military barracks, never intended to be a jail, but it has been used for overflow and additional capacity. That could go away if FAA were to make some, uh, changes to the land use there. It's not an aeronautical use, and once we vacate Geiger, those old military barracks need to be raised and taken down. Um, so for a number of years, that facility has needed additional investment. It's estimated about forty million dollars worth of additional investment that Geiger would need to, uh, maintain it, and we can only send certain level of offenders there as well. So your lower-level offender can go to Geiger. All of the medium and maximum security offenders are in downtown. Um, so again, this is what the tax is, forty percent would come to the cities and towns of Spokane County. So yes, city of Cheney would share in these revenues, and I can get you the percentage, although I would defer to your finance staff, your city administrator, to project for you out into the future what your annual, uh, revenues from it would be, but they would likely be significant based on Cheney's population. It's, uh, per population is how the tax is collected by the county and then, um, given back to the cities and towns. Obviously, the city of Spokane and the city of the valley are the gonna be the two biggest share, they have the majority of the population, but cities and towns like Cheney, like Deer Park, like Medical Lake would share in those revenues as well. Uh, having been out to a lot of these other town meetings, I'll just anticipate one of the questions, um, is what can we use that funds for? And that's what I'm gonna talk about next. So the funds have to be used for three specific purposes. They have to be used for public safety, criminal justice, behavioral health. Criminal justice, a component of that could include building and improving jails or correctional facilities, so that's how the county intends to use, um, a big share of the measure one resources, a big share of that sixty-one percent. Um, the question's come up a lot is, why measure one? Why do we need it now? The jail was built in nineteen eighty-six when population was three hundred fifty-five thousand. Population today is approaching five hundred and fifty thousand in the county. It's almost doubled, and, uh, the jail today is overcrowded and outdated. I talked to you a little bit about those facilities. So are there guardrails on measure one? What it can and can't be used for? Is it restricted funding? Yes. Uh, a lot of the cities and towns we've been out and talked to, they've said, could we use it on hiring more police officers? Yes. Could we do diversion programs? Yes, a diversion program, meaning some kind of intervention before sending somebody to the jail. Could you also use it to pay, uh, if you have a contract rate to send, um, any of your misdemeanances, let's say for open drug use, thinking about the Blake decision, to the county jail? Yes. Anything that's criminal justice, public safety, or behavioral health need in the community, and that's, a lot of that's defined in, uh, state law in RCW, would be an eligible use. So how does the county intend to use its measure one revenues? That's the next part of this. I just tipped my hat a little bit, sharing some of that. Um, we have a very successful program called Breaking Barriers. So the jail's like a catcher's mitt. We don't decide who comes to jail, and we actually don't decide who gets released from jail. Criminal justice system does that, judges do that. So when one of your officers arrests somebody for a bookable offense here in Cheney, they're gonna go downtown, and they're gonna book them into jail. Now, if they stay or get released is also a decision that's up to the judges to make. You might have seen, there's been some recent coverage about felony offenses in the spokesman review, so I'd be happy to go into that. But when we get, um, inmates in the jail, we are hoping to offer expanded programming. So we're not just talking about a new facility, we're talking about programs. Uh, what are programs good for? We're trying to cut down on the number of inmates that come out and reoffend. That's a big problem in the community. It's something we hear about every town and city we've been in so far, is the revolving door that is a jail today. And a lot of counties are experiencing this, a lot of cities are experiencing it. So we're hoping to offer, uh, drug and alcohol treatment, job readiness and job skills. We know some good programs there that work, including contracting and trades programs that have high success rates, communication skills, anger management skills for offenders, parenting, life skills, and GED classes, knowing that an education could be a gateway to a better life, a better pathway for a lot of the people coming into contact with criminal justice. But we also know that the criminal justice system in Spokane County has been underfunded for a number of years, and we're starting to see the results of that. We have very congested court systems. So if anybody's been down to the courts for any myriad reasons, civil or criminal lately, you've probably noticed court dates are months and months and months out, and things are getting rescheduled. Coming out of COVID, we've really seen that. So we are adding a thirteenth judge, likely in January. Uh, that courtroom and the judge comes with a cost. Measure one has the ability to fund that. Prosecutors and public defenders, we have forty-six to fifty, um, deputy prosecuting attorneys. We have thirty-five hundred felony charges right now, every year coming into that office. We can hold about a hundred jury trials a year, thirty-five hundred charges, and we can do a hundred trials. So you can imagine the pressure that's on that system. So eventually, there will be probably public conversation around a fourteenth and a fifteenth judge in courtroom, again, with attendant expenses and costs that go into that. That would come out of the county's sixty percent of the funds. Um, domestic violence programs, I think that's pretty straightforward. Therapeutic courts are a problem-solving court. You may have heard of Veterans Court. So an offender comes in, uh, they work it out, you know, what is causing the offenses? Substance use? Is it PTSD? Is it something else that was connected to their service? How can we work on the underlying causes of something that's causing that person to offend, right? How can we work on the, some of the, the, the background that's causing those crimes or causing those offenses? Uh, we also have a mental health court, same principle. Let's work on the underlying issue while they're going through the court and do some problem solving, so on the end of it, they have a better result than just a jail cell. Um, we also plan to, and intend to fund Spokane Regional Law and Justice Council recommendations. You might have heard over the years, the blueprint for reform, I think it came out twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, series of recommendations about how to reform the criminal justice system to make it operate more effectively, more efficiently, and there are some, uh, some other recommendations we could get into. On public safety, the sheriff's been very open that in the unincorporated counties and in the contract cities, the sheriff's department is understaffed. So part of the sixty percent the county gets and a part that those cities and towns get that are contracted could use measure one resources to hire more deputies, hire more officers. I think I mentioned that earlier. You might know about the co-deployed behavioral health teams, where a mental health counselor is going out, uh, with a team of officers to respond, trying to help people who are in crisis. We do have a diversionary program, the regional program, the city of Cheney may contribute to it already, the Crisis Stabilization Center, which is next on the list. We invite you all to tour the Crisis Stabilization Center. If you haven't been down there, it's a real eye-opening experience to see how we're helping people in crisis and diverting them from jail. Um, we'd also encourage the council, if you haven't, at some point in the future, to come and tour the jail and see for yourself what the facilities are and what state they're in. Um, lastly, community or in custody therapeutic programs. So that Crisis Stabilization Center happens outside the jail. We're talking about it like a sobering center, a detox inside the jail. We have some of those services now, but if you were to come and tour the jail, you would see how restricted and how tight everything is. We don't have classroom space, we don't have treatment space. So in the new facility design, which I brought with me tonight, the plan for the new facility, I'd be happy to point out to you where some of the individual buildings are and how that space is gonna be used, but it contemplates having space that could be used for treatment in addition to just new jail cells. Uh, so this is a conceptual rendering. You'll see that this is downtown, it's on the skyline, this is right behind the current county jail. It is an expansion of that campus. The yellow is what's called a Sally Port, that's the secure entrance. I just wanna pause for a minute, I see we have an officer in the room. So right now, today, before I came down, the jail was in red light status. Has anyone heard of red light status? Okay, a couple of red light status. What that means is the doors, the no vacancy signs on, and nobody coming else into the jail, uh, for a period of time. I think there was a fight or something that was happening on, on like, on the fifth floor, and so the booking, um, officers had to respond to that, so they have to close the front door to the jail, take forty-five minutes to an hour. A couple of weekends ago, it was closed in, in, in red light status for about eight hours. That could mean that a city of Cheney, Cheney police officer who arrested somebody is waiting six, eight hours in that big, long booking queue. So with the new Sally Port, the idea is we'll have more parking spaces and expanded booking area, so you get better throughput. It's very tight, it's very cramped. Oftentimes, there's fights in there, that's where they're discovering the fentanyl pills that we've had several, uh, busts and contraband coming in, and we have a body scanner, new technology in there to prevent that from going into the jail. You can imagine a recent bust we had of three hundred fentanyl pills, what that could've done upstairs if that had gone into the jail, knowing how potent, uh, that drug is. The blue is the new, uh, residential or housing area, the new cells, that will be more medium security. The green is where the programming would be offered, that we call that the Community Correction Center. This entire new campus would be known as the Law and Justice Center. So you see a lot of counties around the state who are embarking on this, who are bringing together all the criminal justice programs in one place. Question has also come up, I'll just anticipate about location, why downtown? Why not out on the west plains? There's a number of stakeholders in downtown who would love to have the jail on the west plains, probably every, now I see some head shaking. You probably know that many years ago, um, there was a discussion about where the county seat should be. Uh, it's in state statute, the jails and the courtrooms go together, right? So unless we were to pick up and move the county seat to Cheney or to Medical Lake, it's unlikely that having a facility out here would be practical. You'd have two laundries, you'd have two kitchens, you'd have transport buses going back and forth. We're actually hoping to avoid that duplication by closing down the Geiger facility and consolidating into one new facility. Um, but that has been another question we continue to get, no matter where we're at in the county, is why downtown? So last thing I'll say, and then I'll open it up for, uh, questions or comments, we're getting a net additional four hundred and ten beds. There's kind of a crosswalk because there's some facilities coming and going. I could get into that with you. Uh, this is kind of the Goldilocks question, are we building the facility too small or too big? We have picked the median forecast, so we know based on historical data how much the jail's been utilized, and we had a presentation this week that we're getting, uh, near the top, tippy-top capacity, even with all the overcrowding we've had. You know, we've got some cells where you should only have one offender, and we've got two, so there's a mat on the floor, but based on what we're seeing with gangs, based on what we're seeing with sex offenders, based on what we're seeing with two genders, all of those groups have to be separated. It's kind of a big Rubik's Cube of the jail. It's not, you have nine hundred and forty-eight cells, and you can use all of them at one time. You need that empty jail bed to be able to reorganize. Let's see, there's a fight, like I said earlier, on the fifth floor. Well, now some of those people have to be rearranged and taken to different cells. It's kind of like a big math problem. Uh, but we are getting a net of four hundred and ten additional with the, uh, capacity. Uh, but we are getting a net of four hundred and ten additional with the capacity um, to having some of those top floors shelled in, so we could add. But let's say ten years from now, there's a, a new therapeutic program that works. Because it's shelled in and not made into jail cells, you could put another courtroom up there. You could put a treatment, you know, ward up there. You could have something a little bit different. So that space on the top floor will be flexible. It also save us some more roll cost on the capital construction. So this is the future state, what we're getting out of having new facilities and new programs. Um, the one thing I should have started with is what's measure one about? Um, we saved about three things, public safety, public safety and public safety. At the end of the day, what we're hoping uh, for, if the public passes this, is to be able to invest in public safety. Um, criminal justice is a component of that. The jail is a very important uh, component of, of public safety. Programs are very important um, component of public safety. Measure one is about a lot more than a jail. And uh, with that, I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Actually, before council asks questions, we had some questions just as you arrived and Karina, would you like to?
Number for that last day, total revenue over the thirty-year period that the county's anticipating the tax will generate?
Yeah, so it's a thirty-year, uh, it's a thirty-year tax. Um, so it will expire thirty years or sunset and would have to be renewed at the end of it. The county's projections are one point seven billion dollars. So you take sixty percent of that going to the county, forty percent going to the cities and towns. And then for the city of Cheney, you would take, based on your population, you'll be getting a share of the forty percent. Um, I don't have that projection with me. And again, I would defer to your finance staff, who do a lot of your planning around sales tax revenue. Wouldn't want to give you the wrong number. Um, but I, I would expect based on your population, it's in the hundred thousand range, uh, several hundred thousand dollars per year, annual.
The other question is, um, what do you think you might tell someone who is wondering whether this one point seven billion dollars? Would be used on more upstream solutions to anticipating out of the population growth, try to. Get to address those underlying causes, like try to find the biggest underlying causes of poverty and that's what we're thinking about. What those investments, the one on the front end, so then wouldn't necessarily need as many of these services.
Yep, good. So that's a common question. Um, I think the answer there has a lot to do with smart justice. So knowing that the funds have to be used in these buckets, criminal justice, public safety, correctional infrastructure and behavioral health. The county has already begun investing and making a number of upstream investments. You may have heard, and it's coming to Cheney, I believe soon, Cheney Public Schools are initiative in student wellness. So trying to make in, early interventions and high school students around mental health. The idea being if we invest there and we're able to offer intervention and treatment. Um, our students, our young people won't end up justice involved or in the criminal justice system. Um, another investment we've made is in the crisis stabilization center, which is further upstream than the jail. There is some additional smart justice that can be done, uh, which is again diverting people from jail, but it could be electronic home monitoring. So ankle bracelets is one investment. And there's, there's nothing that says the city of Cheney couldn't do, use its money for, to go further upstream or to go downstream, as long as it fits into one of these categories. But I will tell you that the board of county commissioners is interested in the public input and feedback. And so if there's a desire for those investments, I would encourage you to contact your county commissioners. Um, or if the public's interested in making suggestions, I do anticipate that there will be a request for proposals when it comes to the programming. And the programming, there's nothing that says it only has to happen in the jail. Um, a lot of the programming that's going to be happening though, the community correction center will be provided by the community. By nonprofits or other groups that have a curriculum that we know is effective or works. Um, and some of that will be provided at their expense and some of it will be provided on an RFP basis through the county.
Just a point of order, your honor. I, I'm sorry to interrupt, cause I love the discussion going, but uh, for us, for us online, we cannot hear what the question is. So I don't, I don't know. I don't mean to interrupt and, and take up time. There, I don't know if there's a way to.
Question. Just based on population alone, we know that the current jail is too small. So the jail has not grown with population, now almost a doubling. Um, so the main goal of this is to eliminate the overcrowding, which is not good for the inmates and it's not good for the corrections officers who work there. But also to bring the uh, population of the jail, to give them a, a better experience. Right now, it's basically twenty-three hours in the cell and one hour free time. That's not how modern corrections run, but that's because of the facility we have, the way it has to run. Um, it's the difference between indirect and direct supervision model. So in the new jail, we'll have more efficiencies. Uh, right now, it's about one corrections officer to forty-six inmates and the new one, it'll be one to sixty-four. But when it comes to the overall size of the jail, I get back to the Goldilocks question of, is it too big or is it too small? And so just based on the data and our trend line, we're projecting and picking the average. So we're not picking the high, we're not picking the low, we're going with where the data tells us, and that's informed by a national forecast. Um, but if, you know, if ten years from now, uh, we don't need the additional uh, Sheldon space that we're, that's coming here. I'll, I'll point to it on this chart, turn this around. That's this orange spot here, you've got yellow, blue, blue and then orange. This could be used for other programs. It could be repurposed. This isn't being, it's being shelved in. And so to your point, if this entire uh, facility is not used, so it could have some other purposes, some other useful light. Even potentially outside of immediate use um, for criminal justice. It could be behavioral health, it could have a public safety use, could be court rooms. So that part, this part of the design is so flexible, to accommodate for. Trying to predict the future. I think uh, the sheriff has said, if you can tell me who's committing crimes thirty years from now, I can tell you what kind of um, jail facility is gonna be needed. But we also know that this conversation has been happening and taking place for fifteen to twenty years now. And in the meantime, the problem has compounded and compounded and compounded. And I think you're seeing that today in our communities, when you see the state of things. Um, the other thing that we're starting to see a lot of and, and we're hearing in a lot of these meetings is that crime is increasing. And people are feeling it, they're feeling less safe in the community. And the statistics show that violent crime in particular has increased. So we're talking about murders, rapes, burglaries, things of that nature. And um, that, I think that's when I refer back to the spokesman review story over the weekend, that's where a lot of frustration is coming from. Is what is it gonna take to do to reduce crime? The jail's just one piece of it. Policing and law enforcement is just one piece of it. It's gonna take a holistic approach to get after that problem. So anyways, now to your questions.
Yes, counsel?
Well, thanks for coming out tonight. Uh, I had a list of questions for the last meeting, but. I recall, I guess for me. Why the sales tax? I mean, I recall distinctly back in early eighties. That we built a new one. And correct me, I thought that was by property tax to fund that.
So what happened in the nineteen eighties was the state legislature invested in new jails all across the state. It's part of a major capital campaign. Since then, the state has slowly and now increasingly shifted the burden and responsibility for criminal justice. In some states across the nation, the state pays not just the majority, but almost all of the criminal justice costs. Now the state has basically said, counties, you can uh, take a sales tax and you can tax yourselves to pay for criminal justice. Here you go. There's also been a shift in state policy of taking different sentencing guidelines and pushing more of the responsibility on certain crimes. Down to the local and county level. The best example of that would be the Blake decision that I could give you. Where that used to be a felony, which means it was on the counties and the state to pay for that prosecution, to house an inmate. And now it's gonna fall on cities and towns. So your gross misdemeanors, if you want to enforce that, if you want to have an emphasis campaign, you're going to pay the freight on that. The interesting thing for the commissioners about the sales tax is that everyone pays it, not just property owners. Visitors to the area, of course, you know, in our region, you get a lot of visitors. You have a football game out here. You know, all those people coming in to Cheney are gonna pay the tax um, and pay that sales tax. So they're helping pay for the public safety that's delivered to them.
But again. It's the most regressive tax there is, alright? And we already have. Iconed up six tenths of a cent that we've been adding on. I know public safety and criminal justice, we already are taxing, so we got. Two there. I never heard any other options coming out of the commissioners. With regard to, if you need four hundred and ten beds, why didn't we just have a property tax, which I think would have been a lot less of an impact to the entire county? I never saw another alternative is, did they do studies that didn't come out or where are they on yet?
So they, they have studied this over the last fifteen years. They, I could probably bring back to you or find the plan that was, the past sheriff. Did have something more in mind on a property tax. Uh, what the county intends to do with our share of their revenue is to bond against it. That's why it's a thirty-year tax, to build the facility. Um, so there's some, there are some questions about what's more stable, a property tax or a sales tax. But I have to get back to on the particulars of, when last was a property tax considered? I know that it has been discussed and it seems to have, you know, more interest in sharing this burden with visitors. And people from outside of the area who are coming here in terms of being able to collect the tax.
Then I guess, finally then, if this doesn't work, is there already, is there? Something in the works as far as another proposal that typically you scale it down, I mean. I don't know the. I don't know if anyone's done any kind of polling or not, but. It just seems like uh, this has been kind of a tough sell and. Going from eight point nine to nine point one is significant. So I, is there any, is it, is it more of the? I guess ancillary needs or, I mean, four hundred and ten beds at. Whatever, sixty percent of one point seven billion seems like a lot. Is there any other alternatives that are also kind of? In the event this doesn't go in November, what would happen early this spring?
Yeah, so I think that question is probably best directed to my bosses, the commissioners. And what they will, are willing to commit to. I know one has said they want to go immediately back to the ballot. There's been some conversation about sending it back next August if it were to fail. I think they'll wait and see the outcome and listen to the will of the voters. Um, and try and get an informed decision of where maybe there was more support or less support in the county. Um, rather than trying to predict that. Um, but yes, it is, it is true and a number uh, of the jurisdictions. Um, this is not, taxes are never typically popular. And uh, tax increase is a very difficult thing in any circumstances. Ask the voters to support. Um, and so working through the robust plan and the, the high level plan is how I describe what the county has. On the facility, the facility is rated for about three hundred million, is about what the facility is gonna cost. And the county shares about one point one billion. Again, over thirty years. And nobody brings us a big cardboard check and says, here's your one billion dollars on the first day. Um, we still have six months before the tax would be beginning to collect it. So there is more time for consultation, should this pass. But right now, uh, regardless of this passes, it's gonna be five years before the new facility is built. And so this week and in the months leading up to this presentation that I mentioned about jail capacity. If this goes down, the jail capacity issue is going to continue to worsen. And what the commission has talked about is putting all of the contracted agencies on notice. The US Marshals, uh, the Department of Corrections, the cities and counties. Uh, who are contracted to send your prisoners and your inmates to the jail. Probably what would have to happen, at least the option set, the county is consider what if this fails, is the county may have to only house felons. And so cities and towns probably be on the hook for sending your inmates to Benton County. I mean, some other location, if we have to preserve uh, the county's space for the offenders that we are charged with prosecuting and housing. Which in state statute says felons. The misdemeanors, we've got a little bit more leeway on. So that's not a, that's not a warm, fuzzy conversation to have, but it is a likely outcome and something that the board has as recently as yesterday. Contemplated, what if this doesn't pass? What happens? What does public safety look like? What does the criminal justice system look like? Um, how are we gonna pay for the thirteenth judge in courtroom and for new prosecutors we need, the new programs that we still need? So they'll have to come back to the, they'll have to go back to the drawing board for sure. I, I did wanna pull up Cheney, so you got Spokane County, the city of the valley, so you, number four in terms of percentages, one point three percent. That's one point three percent of uh, that total is a signi- pretty significant. So again, I defer to your financial pros, but I would guess that's in the high hundreds of thousands range.
Uh, you done?
Thank you.
Oh, nothing. Thank you for coming. Appreciate this.
Thanks for coming.
None? Okay, I think Derek had his hand up. Um, can we, would you like to go ahead and ask your question?
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Can hear it over here somewhere.
Online. Go ahead, Derek.
Can you hear me?
Now it's starting to.
Okay, hello, hello?
Go ahead and ask your question and I will repeat it.
Okay, um, so I guess my question, I just wanted to um. Uh, reiterate something that he had said, funds are coming from, the forty percent part of the funds are coming from the entire pot. Not necessarily um, what the tax is collected within the city of Cheney, but the actual pot.
Yeah, you're, you would get one point three two two zero percent of the pot collected in Spokane County. No matter what taxes collected. And so again, your financial pros could tell you whether you'd be a net benefitter or you'd break even. Or maybe, you know, depending on how your population is structured, but those numbers would be reset every year. So as Cheney grows. If it grows proportionally to other jurisdictions more or faster, knowing how fast some of the growth has been happening on the west plains. You could see your revenues increase. On the other hand, if population was to contract. Uh, you see a decanting of population, that percentage could go down.
Awesome. And Patrick, thank you for coming tonight and, and addressing this. Um, I, I spoke last city council um, about this measure one and if. Um, city council and or the finance committee or city minister had, had discussed what we would do with these funds. Uh, I haven't got a response back. Do, I don't wanna put anyone on the spot, but is, has there been discussion on if this passes, what we would use the funds for?
I think that sounded like a question for the council, which is, if this passed, how would you use the resources?
That's a long way from now.
Well, November.
We, we, we have no idea and because it's not real money yet.
I will share uh, what I've heard in other jurisdictions. Public safety has been a hot one. Especially in some of the outline more rural areas and some that contract with the sheriff, they would like another deputy. Various jurisdictions are considering their own police department, potentially would this be catalytic for that effort? Uh, so we've heard some of that, but predominantly it's come back to law enforcement, how cities and towns have talked about it. City of Spokane took a position in opposition to measure one. City of the Valley hasn't taken a position, city of Airway Heights, and I believe ser- city of Liberty Lake. And the county have all passed resolutions uh, encouraging support for measure one. So that's one other action some of the cities and towns have taken is to put their councils on the record to say one way or the other, or not to take a position at all. Just say, let the voters decide.
Thank you, Patrick.
And are we good, Derek? Good, yep, thanks.
Thanks for the time, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Pat.
But I, I just have a quick question. Are we, um, is there been a? A, a ruling on whether, as long as you choose for criminal justice purposes, would we be able to supplant existing programs? Or is this can only be used for new programs?
That's a good question I have to get back to. I do think the resources are fungible to some extent. I've heard conversation about some cities thinking about that, okay, we're using some funding over here to fund this. Measure one were to pass, that would free up unrestricted resources. Um, but I'll talk to our finance people or the prosecutor's office and see if they have a firm answer for it.
And I know I asked Karina, but does anyone else in the audience have a question? Nope. Okay, thank you. Drive safe. Alright. Um, let's talk about minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Of our last meeting.
Your honor, I would move to approve the main, the minutes for October tenth.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Bye.
All opposed? Thank you. Um, vouchers and payroll.
Um, expenditures, five hundred and six thousand, five hundred and two dollars and seventy-four cents. Some other payables of twenty-six thousand, eighty dollars for a total of five hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-four cents.
Your honor, the finance committee reviewed the expenditures and I move to approve the expenditures as read.
All in favor? Thank you. Uh, you can see that the real mayor spent some money. And there's your list. Uh, there are no appointments, uh, action items. We will go into a public hearing for the property tax levy. Cindy?
Thank you.
You so much.
Good evening. I just want to talk a bit about what we're doing with our budget today. We're having, well, we're having four presentations. The first public hearing will be about, um, our proposed property tax levy for two thousand twenty four. At the end of that, there are two ordinances. One for our general property tax levy and one for our EMS property tax levy. I'm only asking for first read of those ordinances tonight, please. What we don't have tonight is our ordinance for our general obligation bond for our pool construction. I have been told by our bond attorney, I will have that by our next council meeting, so I will bring that forward at that time. And then we can address that. I do have to have the taxes um, certified and submitted to the county by the end of November. So there is a timeframe in which we have to do that, but we have a little bit of time. I just wanted to give you that. Second, the public hearing will be in our governmental revenue sources. That kind of looks where we are added as of the end of September and what that projection might be for two thousand and twenty four. Um, following that, the last public hearing will be for our public safety departments. We'll hear from fire and police. Well, we'll get their budget presentations, um, and what they see for their, um, going on their departments next year. That's kind of where we're at right now, but we're going to start here with this public hearing. I gotta move this little guy. All right. Yay. All right. Uh, our public hearing for our property tax levy. Uh, we talk about the same basic things every time we do this, our assessed valuation, how to calculate our property taxes. Breakdown on how those property taxes are paid and what that levy might look like in two thousand and twenty four. Um, remember in November twenty twenty one, our citizens voted to give us a levy lift that started in twenty twenty two. It's a six year levy. That has a six percent riser on it, an increase. Um, and that obviously expires in twenty twenty seven. Um, at this point, our levy lift makes up thirty one percent of our, of our general property taxes. You can see what that levy brought in in twenty two, twenty three and our proposed for twenty twenty four. I'm going to talk about that increase from twenty three to twenty four. Remember last year? We sat here and we looked at these levies and then there was that, um, over levy that we had to, to kind of repage the county. Um, so that gave our citizens a break in two thousand and twenty three. So for twenty twenty four, we're back up to where that was. And then that six percent on top of that. That's why that looks like that's such a, a large increase there. Um, that's what we would have been had that over levy not happened in twenty twenty three. Um, I like to talk about the levy lift. I think the levy lift, so this is number two levy lift for us. The first one started in two thousand and sixteen. We've done some great things for public safety with that. That is what we told our citizens we were going to do with it and it's exactly what we did. We have levied a little over four million dollars and we've, and after two thousand twenty four, we've spent all but two hundred dollars of that money. It has gone for so many different things and so many really needed, um, equipment and some personnel in both fire and police. Um, it's been well used. Um, this kind of just breaks it down between police and fire by year. On how those are being spent. One of the things in fire, I'll point out, remember that we have been saving a hundred thousand dollars a year for our next fire truck? So after twenty twenty four, we'll have a million dollars in that bank. Those are expensive pieces of equipment. We had to go out for, you know, we had to go for financing for our last one. Um, getting that upfront and available is a really important piece. Um, and allowing us to do that. It's kind of just shows between graphically, uh, where we are between police and fire. Um, and kind of the things it's been used on. Now this is up through two thousand twenty three. This isn't including, uh, what's proposed for next year. But it does show you, you know, police officers reserves and training and equipment for them, some improvements. The fire engine, including what we're saving, plus the debt we're paying on the current one that we have. And two thousand twenty four will be the last year on the air pack leases that we have in the fire department as well. Um, some fire and training for them and some station improvements as well.
How much time left on the fire truck?
It gets paid off. I believe it was a thirteen year to start with. So we're probably about eight more years.
Thank you. Yeah. Just an estimate.
Our proposed levy use for next year is, is about the same kind of thing. That doesn't change a whole bunch. Um, police officer reserves and training, again, the fire engine. Um, and then some firefighter and volunteer program funding and then some additional training for their EMS. Our assessed valuation. So twenty twenty three was a big assessed valuation jump for the city of Cheney. Um, on the average, it was thirty six percent. And you know, we all heard about that. We all discussed that at great length. Twenty twenty four is much more reasonable than three percent. Uh, but you can see there what that change has been over the years. So really our twenty twenty four is a much smaller increase than we've had in ten years. Over time, ten point two four percent has, has grown. So tax rate, I can't, I can't do this slide for you for two thousand twenty four. Cause I do not know what Spokane County, library, the conservation, the state or Cheney School District's levies will be. I just know what ours are. But you can look in twenty, there's a two year comparison between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. And you can see where we are. So per thousand of assessed valuation, we actually went down in twenty twenty three. The reason we went down, let's go back to that over levy because we reduced the levy by that much. It was like six hundred thousand dollars. That is the reason that that went down. Um, and this is just percentage wise, because I think it's interesting to look at just to kind of see where we are. Uh, twenty twenty two, we are thirty percent down to almost twenty seven in twenty twenty three. But I mean, you can see the school district holds tied at about thirty two or thirty three percent of a tax bill. Uh, state schools somewhere around twenty five and everything else varies a tiny little bit, but not much. How to calculate your taxes? Take the assessed valuation of your home, divide by a thousand and times the tax rate. That's how much you pay in total. Um, a three hundred thousand dollar house here. In two thousand twenty three, paid two thousand five hundred and two dollars in taxes. Our share of that was six hundred and seventy two. So this is my new little slide this year. I tried to capture if in two thousand twenty, you had a two hundred and fifty dollar, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. And if in fact your value increased by the average amount of the assessed valuation, which many people did not. So but though it's the only thing I can really look at is that average, um, increase. You look at twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, if that happened in twenty twenty four, your house would be worth about four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. If that were the case, for your city taxes next year, you would pay one thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Now that's for our general, our levy lift and our EMS levy. That is, I haven't even talked about our general obligation levy yet. I will do that at the end of this presentation. So you look at that piece, um, the difference there is two hundred and eighty three dollars. Um, over two thousand twenty three on our city taxes. Our proposed levies for two thousand twenty four, the total levy is little over three million dollars. That's broken down by the regular levy of little over two million. And then of course the levy lift that we just looked at of nine hundred and forty four thousand dollars. EMS, um, it's right at almost about, it's about a thirty one cent per thousand. Uh, we are in year six and six of our EMS levy. Should the council choose to do that, they can pass a resolution to put that out for our next six years. Um, you know, we get about three hundred sixty nine, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in that, and that does pay for for half. So basically two full-time, full-time firefighters. Pool construction. So we pass that we're going to build a pool. That's exciting. Um, we are issuing that in two separate bond issues for a couple of reasons. One, um, it's just going to be, you know, we had it up to the thirteen million dollars, up to perhaps, I think twenty nine years. So in discussions with Todd, that we will, the first, the first round, I guess, of bond issues will be six point five. And then the second round, the following year will be for the remaining six point five. But by then we will know any other funding sources we might have. We will know. And then there's some interest rate benefits from doing that as well. So the first ones will be issued in, um, March of two thousand twenty four. We will have interest and principal due in two thousand twenty four. I am estimating the debt service on that's going to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that is a pure estimate on my part. I tried to think about when we had all the public meetings about the pool and there was a lot of talk trying to keep the, the debt, you know, your, uh, the levy on the property owners between fifty and fifty three cents, something like that. So I thought, well, thirty cents, since we're doing half of it, that's probably a good, a good estimate. I think about three fifty. I will know more on that when we meet again in November, the first meeting in November. Uh, our bond underwriter is getting me some information. He just doesn't have it yet. And then of course we will have the ordinance from the, the bond attorney at that first meeting in November as well. But I think that was going to come in somewhere between twenty eight, thirty cents or so per thousand. Um, so when you think about it, it's kind of the same maybe as perhaps is what's going to happen for the EMS levy. As far as that tax parse, you know, piece of that. Um, but I will have more definite information on that at the next council meeting. And that's what I have for our levy. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Uh, Mr. Schmidt, do you have anything?
Well, I was just, this is, we do this every year. Yes. So if we didn't pass either of these ordinances, that means we would get no property tax.
That's correct.
And no one would have to pay any. And that ain't be interesting. There's no further questions.
Are there no further questions? I was going to work my way down. Apparently not. Go for it.
I move for the first reading of ordinance Y fifty three in title and summary. Be placed before us for the future.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Oh, maybe Carrie should read it.
If I had it in front of me.
I apologize.
Always right here, Carrie. Hold on. You want to read it?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Let's do the public comment before we read. Anyone have any comments on the property tax levy? You will have two additional opportunities. And that you'll have two tonight and then two over the next coming month. Um, third option, opportunity, anyone? I don't see any hands. I don't see any hands. Okay. We're done.
Ordinance Y fifty three, an ordinance setting the regular property tax levy for the year twenty twenty four and providing for the effective date hereof.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Cindy.
There's another one as well, isn't there?
That was only a first reading.
There's two ordinances, Paul. There was fifty three and I believe fifty four is the other one. Fifty four is for the EMS levy.
Go ahead.
We have a motion. Yeah.
No, we did.
We did for both of them?
No.
Yeah, you just did for one. Right.
But we, we should vote on.
Well, I accidentally had us vote beforehand, remember? That's, I, I got it backwards. I had her, now that you've pointed it out.
But the public hearing is still open, correct?
Yes. So that we would need the other.
Yeah, I'll move for the first reading of, uh, ordinance Y fifty four. Uh, entitled to be, and entitled summary order to be placed before us for passage in future meetings.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Carrie, would you like to read the motion or the?
Good. Ordinance Y fifty four, an ordinance setting the EMS tax levy for the year twenty twenty four and providing for the effective date hereof.
All in favor? Opposed?
Perfect. Thank you. Um, so should we close this public hearing and then reopen my new one?
Public hearing is closed. Now we will have a, open a public hearing on governmental revenue sources.
You'd never know I'm in charge of our IT contract by how inept I am at, um, sharing my screen. All right, here we are. Maybe. Uh, this is our two thousand twenty four budget revenues, uh, public hearing. Oh gosh, it's gonna go forward. Just do this all at once. So you know, we talk a lot about different things. We talk a lot about governmental funds and enterprise funds and what are they? So we are only talking about governmental funds tonight. Which include general fund, parks and rec, all of our police funds, our fire funds, all of our streets. Um, and then again, our, um, everything else that's down there, information technology, outside jobs, debt service, capital projects and our pool construction fund. Total governmental revenues, a little over, well, almost thirty five million dollars. Um, big chunk of the reason this is so big is that big huge beginning fund balance column. I'll talk more about that as we go. And here it is without the beginning fund balance or carrying cash into this year. So, um, a, a little over twenty two million dollars based on our categories. And we're going to go through these categories as we go through this presentation. Um, our general fund governmental revenues, almost seventeen million, and there's back to our total for all governmental funds of almost thirty five. So this is a slide that I'm attempting to show you. Um, that beginning fund balance, that big pink, you know, piece of that first square. So when you think about, um, a budget, there's the money we're getting in this year as our and the money we're asked, we're going to think we're going to get in twenty twenty four. And then there's money that carries from year to year. We don't spend every dime of our revenue, try not to. And so the money that's still there carries into our next year. Oh gosh, I gotta go backwards. Hold on. There I am back over here. There. So our general fund, um, it has, I think it's going to have about one point two. That might be a little conservative. It might be closer to one point three for our cash carryover, but restricted reserves, which is what stopped doing that, um, is almost five point five million dollars. Um, I'll talk about what those are as we go through, but we know, we have things like lodging tax, IT, city beautification, capital projects, all this money that carries from year to year. We kind of look into those. We have a bunch in our streets. Um, there are some in police, criminal justice has quite a carryover amount right here. Um, and then anything that's restricted, you can't, we can't just spend on anything. It's restricted for a specific purpose. In the general fund, our ARPA money is still sitting in there as our unspent ARPA money as a restricted reserve, because you can't just spend that on, on anything. Um, and so on doing that, there's a little over six million will carry over into all these funds, but there are six back here. I'm sorry. I didn't realize this was on a thing. Uh, there's a little over six point one in restricted reserves that we can't just spend on anything. It has to be spent on a very specific and authorized purpose. And that's kind of important to remember as we think about those beginning fund balances. Um, typically we get taxes, licenses, grants, we charge fees, we have fines and we get some other miscellaneous revenues in. And those that will go over next taxes make up about twenty five, about twenty seven percent of all governmental revenues. That's obviously mostly in property sales and utility taxes. Uh, just a little bit of a, a table there showing where we are. Where we are, and this is as of September thirtieth and what I think those are going to be in two thousand and twenty four. That's a nice little bump up. That's a nice little bump up for us. We've had a nice sales tax year this year, and I think that's probably going to continue. I do have that general obligation bond, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars as that estimate that we talked about. And then this is obviously breaking those property taxes down. It's what we just talked about, general levy lift, EMS and general obligation. Uh our sales tax, it's interesting, we were talking about a sales tax, these public safety taxes are what. And these criminal justice sales taxes are what Paul was referring to in that last presentation. This is how much we get right now from sales taxes. For criminal justice purposes, is that four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But we get lodging tax money, some brokered natural gas and our general sales tax. That brokered natural gas, remember, is natural gas tax we get from natural gas that's purchased on the open market. It's not coming from a Vista for people that have natural gas in their homes.
Cindy, again on that criminal justice, is that two, two tenths of?
You know, I think that is two tenths, Paul. I'll have to look at that and get back to you for sure off the top of my head. We talked about that just two weeks ago, and I'm trying to remember now that graph I gave you, but I think that is two tenths, yes. Uh there's our general sales taxes. Uh it stops at the third quarter, that big purple line, but I mean, you can see it's just had a, you know, it's had a big bump there for a bit. And then it had a dip a little bit, you know, that dip kind of through the COVID years. Um, you know, our sales tax is tied directly to building in the city of Cheney. So when we have great building years, we have great sales tax shares. We don't have a lot of toys. I don't have any boat, we don't have boat dealerships, car dealerships, things that you get those big dollar amounts from. So our, our sales tax is built on building and then just our, our, our basic um businesses here in Cheney. Utility taxes. Uh so these are all the different utility taxes we get. Um nothing, you know, the biggest one here is utility is the six percent on your utility taxes. That you, that's six percent electric. Um and then there's water and sewer and garbage utility taxes that go into the general fund. Residential street is a four, four percent on that, on electric and natural gas cells. That is a voter approved tax and the Parks and Recreation is four point seven five. It's voter approved as well. It goes specifically into the Parks and Recreation Fund for those programs.
Just deciding on again, I'm sorry, Cindy.
You're good.
The residential street again, sunsets in twenty twenty six. The Parks and Rec is in two. But you might wanna think about what we wanna do, you know, in twenty twenty four with regard to residential street.
I'm sure. I'm sure in Todd's public works presentation, he'll speak to what the residential street program's been able to do in Cheney, which has been huge. I mean, it's been, it's why we have such nice roads. It really is. And um it's, it's been a real benefit. I think it's a real, it's a tax that our citizens pay and they can see a definite benefit for what they get from that. And it's been a, it's been a great thing for our, for our city for sure. Um licenses and permits, there's a few things there, not a whole lot, building permits, parking. Uh the biggest one there will be our building permits. So there's building, plumbing and mechanical. There. I play with this up here a bit, I think on something I looked at earlier, I think I said fifty and then that seventy five. Because I think I, after I looked to see where we are at the end of September, I thought, well, maybe we can hit seventy five next year. Um, you know, that all just depends on what's going on, on, on what we have. You typically, I ask Todd what his thought is and he gives me his thought. And, you know, kind of if we know there's something that's gonna be coming down the pike, it just, it's totally, this is totally contingent on what, if on building that's going on. Um we like the good years for sure. That looked like that. There were some, and a lot of those probably were, you know, our eastern projects with um some of their big buildings. So when you think about building permits though, and. You know, you get the money upfront. So someone comes in with their building permit and they pay upfront. And sometimes those are multiple year projects that we have to have a building inspector out inspecting those. So. Um that's something to think about on those big years. Like, yeah, it's great that year, but we may have a three year requirement to be inspecting it. If it's a big building up at Eastern, that we still need to fund those building inspectors. Um intergovernmental kind of takes anything that comes from another governmental source. Those big ones up there, city assistance, liquor excise profits, marijuana and gas, those come from the state. We get those monthly at the end of the month. The rest of these, arterial street, public defense, these are all just basic grants we get. Um so like therapeutic court is now gone to a grant basis. When we got our first therapeutic court grant, I don't know if you recall that, we got all the money upfront. So now they've gone to a, a program where it's going to be, they're gonna spend the money and we'll get reimbursed. And that's more of a typical grant behavior. Um we spend it and then we get paid back in the end. Uh charges for services. These are the basic same stuff that we have all the time. Uh you know, there's some probation fees. We do have a nice contract with medical leg for providing court services. School resource officer, I have that in there. We don't do it anymore. Um and so it was, it's a reduction this year. Um fire contract with Eastern is still ongoing, access contracts, planning rec. Park mitigation and then our finance and executive and public works admin charges. Um so in the, in a governmental fund, I can't just charge those enterprise funds a dollar amount to do their services. I have to earn that. They're their own little business. And so uh my office, Mark's office, Todd's office, we all have to keep track of our time during a month in the year. And then that actual time we spent between government and enterprise funds, we have to actualize those costs at the end of the year. Turns into a nice revenue for the general fund, but it also has, you know, it's earned, it's an earned thing. And there they are. Uh fines, this is all court money. This all is what the court uh through, through their process, through their court proceedings. And um fees and fines that their, their customers pay that the city um is allowed to keep. That's what this is. And there you are. Um it used to be, we had to get a lot of money for parking infractions. That kind of ended when COVID hit. Um obvious, you know, a lot of people, the students anyway, um left, and that hasn't really quite rebounded at this point.
And the meters, when the meters left.
And so the meters are actually up on the charges for services, but yes, those have actually, and when the meters left. Those metered fees that we used to get, and we still get a part of those, but those went down considerably as well. Uh miscellaneous, so this, this went up a bit this, this year, and it's because of interest income. As everyone notices in your own accounts, interest is paying a little more this year, and I thought this is an interesting little. Slide to show you where we are in two thousand twenty three. We're getting some nice investment income right now. Um you know, we usually hover around here and it's, it, it has really, have gone up in twenty twenty three. And, and that's certainly nice and we're able to fund some things with that for sure.
Cindy, what are our rentals?
I'm sorry?
What are the rentals? In the miscellaneous?
I'm gonna go back here. Um that would be things like rentals up at the Ren Pearson Building.
Okay, stuff like that, where we rent out our buildings.
That is a huge component of the park and rec budget is, is that, but it is part of what, it lives in that, in that grouping of revenue. Um transfers in and debt proceeds, this is obviously looking big. Because of the six hundred and six point five million dollars I'm expecting in bond proceeds next year, I did need to have those budgeted. Um transfers in, I did, I did increase the amount of the transfer into the street department this year when we were looking at budgeting. Um doing so is allowing the street to uh kind of reestablish their twenty five percent reserve. That we have said that we want them to have. Uh the street fund is, is an interesting um animal in that. You know, on these big winter years when they have a lot of time and they have to buy a lot of product on the street. You know, they use their money pretty quickly. They don't have a huge personnel component, although it's probably the biggest piece of that. But it's just a matter of, of street maintenance and snow removal. And the level of the last couple of years, we've, we've really, well, we removed the twenty five percent reserve. We've used that. So that's going to allow that uh to be reestablished and give them a little more money to work with. The information technology, that's basically our Windows three sixty five component. In that I don't have that added into the IT charges for two thousand twenty four to departments. So once I got the information on some of this IT stuff that I needed, I didn't think it was very fair to go back and put it on them to say, oh, by the way, I'm gonna charge you this much more. I'm sorry, the budget's already balanced. And so I did ask Mark and the mayor if, if I could move some money over to pay for that for two thousand twenty four. And some of those IT expenses that we weren't expecting. Um and then I will build those into the IT charges in the department starting in two thousand and twenty five. Uh total governmental revenues, I'll buy those little categories we just went through. I have that little line, cash carried into the year, so. Cash, I'm gonna have at the end of twenty twenty, twenty twenty three that I can move into twenty twenty four. And I have that, that component for twenty twenty four is a little over six million dollars. Um and then there's some restricted reserves that will just pop over there as well for a total of thirty four. Now, I haven't had that cash carried over and those restricted reserves in our government, in this presentation before. And in fact, I've left them out of the general fund in previous budgets, but we have moved everybody's. Um restricted reserves and their cash carryover in every other fund last year. And I think just for consistency and transparency, I think it's important that you all see how much money is in a restricted reserves that we can't spend. And how much money is being carried over as part of. You know, the twenty twenty, you know, the twenty five percent reserve that you can spend and things like that, you know, that we can dig into a little bit or additional. Uh reserve counts that we have. So the total amount of all these go governmental, intra-governmental revenues is thirty, little, almost thirty five million dollars. What are you gonna pay for? This is a hard thing to read, so I'm gonna go through some additional ones pretty quickly over here. The biggest piece here, twenty three percent, here's parks and rec and pool construction. That'll be great. I don't think anybody has a question on that one. This blue one right here is police. Fire. And they get littler as we go, finance. Admin. Uh these two one, these two little ones slid out here are public works admin and building and planning. Um court up there. And then ending fund balance. So I brought that money in as beginning fund balance. So basically you take our cash carryover, you add all the revenues. You subtract the money that we plan on spending, and then there's ending fund that will save to carry into the next year. That's kind of how beginning and ending fund work. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before, because I did this wrong last time. Before council uh asks questions, I will ask the public. Uh both Zoom and the audience, if there are any questions on this uh presentation. For the public hearing. Uh going two times and final request, any questions? All right, thank you. Uh let's start. Mark, anything?
Yeah, one quick, sorry. Uh getting back to that slide, the ending fund balance percentage. Can you just tell me a little bit about what? That, what's that, that's gonna be? Is that the pool on a big part of that and stuff or what?
Yes, I have a.
Also designated funds, right, of six.
It'll be designated, so I, in the general fund, it's just a big chunk of that, you know, you have your ARPA fund. You have our twenty five percent reserve.
Right.
Um I have added this year, and you may have seen this in some of the stuff I brought out. There's been a lot of talk in um finance officers, municipal finance officers for a um kind of a revenue stabilization. And I'm a, you know. If in fact our building revenues reduce, if our building permits reduce. And therefore, is that gonna mean our sales tax is gonna reduce? Yes. You know, that, those will go hand in hand. And so there's some talk about that. I think I helped, I think I put maybe five percent of the general fund. What was left, you know, of those expenditures in a revenue stabilization, which I was gonna, I can talk about that now for that matter. Um I'll show you what that looks like. Uh let me think where I'm gonna get that right here. That's not there. Okay, I have to unshare, so I'm gonna stop sharing. And I'm here and I'm gonna reshare. Give me two seconds here.
So of the thirty five, thirty six million that we have in our budget, about ten million of it is ending fund balance. This means we're really operating at about twenty five million, which is pretty good.
Yeah, it is. Um we um. Hold please.
Yeah.
Just trying to get to this. I wanted to show you this in the general fund. Zoom and. Maybe I won't show you that.
I think it's great how much we're saving and how much we do have as an end fund balance. That's.
What I do wanna talk.
A really.
So this, this five percent revenue stabilization, I just wanna talk about that for a minute. That's specifically in the general fund. And so we have our twenty five percent reserve that we don't wanna touch. It sits over here. That is, that is great. Um the, the financial policies that we just passed last time talk about holding that twenty five percent reserve and holding that. So this five percent reserve for a revenue stabilization. My intent and thought there is, and certainly, this is just, I mean, I stuck this in here, so this is open for obviously your discussion. But my thought is, is if our building is going to decrease, and that means our sales tax is going to decrease. This puts away a little five percent, it's about four hundred thousand dollars. That if that's the case and our sales tax drops, because we're balancing this budget on a certain amount of sales tax. And if that drops, that gives us a pot of money to pull from to help pull that through until we decide how we wanna do that. Um until we're gonna, you know, how we're gonna mitigate that. Um that, I don't have that in every single fund. I just have that in the general fund, but right now. Um as far as your ending fund balance question, since I did, this was revenues and I didn't deal with expenditures specifically, I don't have those numbers right off the top of my head, but yes. So our, our ending fund, um twenty seven percent of what all those revenues were. Is, is it any fund balance, but a good chunk of that is restricted reserves. I would say there's probably about. Eight million, maybe, you know, maybe nine, that would be unrestricted. And yeah, that does have to do with the pool as well.
Right. I think what I was encouraged by is, I mean, to have an end fund balance of twenty seven percent. Means you're not spending in excess in a whole lot of areas.
No.
That's the good part of, of the budget is, I mean, most of us probably don't have an end funny balance of twenty seven percent. So that means we're, we're not spending in other areas in excess, which is very, very, shows us a really great balance.
We're just talking here about governmental funds, remember? We're not talking about light water, sewer, garbage.
Right.
So in these governmental funds, there is not a fund that that went in and spent in excess of what they were bringing in. I mean, in, in, in a perfect world, you wanna get your revenue out there and you wanna have that provide services to your citizens, absolutely. But there's also a financial, a fina, a fiscal responsibility piece that you have to hold a little bit of that back to deal with decreased revenues. To deal with something that comes up that you may not have any, you know, we have no knowledge of right now, that we're gonna have to have to fund that later. And so those are important pieces to also have a component set aside for those.
Right, yeah, that's good. And then I guess another question, it's just a general one for any of us, I guess, cuz I'm fairly new still. Um have we ever done something as a city to evaluate like ways we could generate more revenue? That would help with our budget with maybe some of the things that we have as a city or assets we have or um that would help. Ongoing revenue be generated into city.
I, I think we do. I think the departments do, and I think in each of the committees. Um I know in finance, we talk about those things a bit.
Um so governmental revenues are governmental because they are derived from taxes. Fee, ta, you know, taxes and fees, you know, charges for services, a little bit of fines, that's what the majority of that is. So that's either a tax that you're going to impose to raise revenue. Or there are some charges for services, so we'll bring a charges, we'll bring a fees and charges resolution. Probably next, next council meeting, kind of looking at all these governmental fees, and that's an opportunity to say. Okay, hey, is this particular program paying for itself? Is there a way to make it pay for itself? Is there a way to increase the revenue, you know, that we're going to charge for this service? To help at least offset maybe more of what those expenses are. And those things are looked at by department heads all the time, every year. I mean, they all have their charges and fees they charge from, and that's an important component of when they're looking at their budget and what they think their revenues. And that's an important component of when they're looking at their budget and what they think their revenues are going to come in at. Is they're looking to see what those charges and fees are? And is there an ability to raise them or is it a good idea to raise them? Or, you know, sometimes. Is that a good idea? So it is definitely looked at.
This is a, this is a comment on it that the mayor. To note, the state is really good at giving local government authority to tax their own people, but under certain conditions now. The sales tax, you know, that the county is proposing. We can propose unlimited scale, sales tax increase just for gene, one would be. A street. For maintenance purposes, you can, you can go to the borders for that, but you can't ask for just a general increase in our sales. However. Utility taxes are water and sewer and garbage. For instance, we charge six percent for the most part, water, sewer and garbage.
Six percent in electric, six percent, I believe in sewer, and I believe. Six percent of garbage and water and sewer, I think, are at eleven.
That's because we added. The electrical, we've added the four percent for streets and four and a half percent for. Parks, but we have some unlimited capacity to raise utility tax on. Water, sewer and garbage without a vote. See, Spokane, for instance, is eighteen percent. And that suggests we do anything like that, but.
I I wasn't either. I was thinking, I was thinking of creative ways besides taxes and fees.
But it just, it's awe inspiring to me, just an example. We've talked about that where we get. One, we're supposed to get one percent of the sales tax, you know, six point five the state gets, we're supposed to get. One cent of that, however. The county gets point one five of that, so we only get point eight five. Of one percent or one cent for sales tax. And I guarantee you that that was an old rule back whenever to administer our, the tax collection for us. Which is now into millions of dollars. Which is certainly, you know, baked into everything they do, but. And and then SDA is at point eight. We're at point eight five. So, you know, when you really look at Cheney, we're really restricted. I mean, we have very limited property tax and and attribute a lot of that to. Tax or land that we have within the city that's tax exempt. We also, we're too close to Spokane. If you want to have any kind of retail, because everything bleeds in, we've done studies on that. So it is really interesting thing with regard to the. Taxes on sales tax. Then, and then, end of this month, we all better be making our second payment on property tax. And I always remind, you know, when you write that, it's like the city's getting it. We get twenty six percent of that. The rest is for the the state and the county and the other little government jurisdiction.
Library and a few other, yeah.
So when we're talking about these big numbers, we're just a really small piece of the pie where. It's really hard to expand that unless you want to put additional burden on our taxpayers, which. Always look at, you know, when these things come along. And like Cindy was saying, if if that can't supplant current. Then that extra, I don't know what he was saying. Should be right another three to five hundred thousand a year. That's for new programs. You can't use it to. Supplant that for other, you know, take some out of the police for fires. So it it. It might look like it's all. Interesting, but. Me, it's always been the cities, especially what in. City of Cheney, where we have these challenges. Yeah, when we go buy that fire truck, it's the same price for any city. To buy that fire track, you don't get any break because your sale, your tax base is, you know, third of what some of these other cities are. So we've always been challenged. We've always had to work hard, you know, to make our ends meet because we're on such a thin margin. I'm sorry, enough of the soapbox. I did have another question. Cindy, on Pete, on your slide twenty eight, when you had. What will revenue pay for? I know it in there that on that listing on the side, because the wedges are.
The wedges are tiny, yeah.
Yeah, but you show streets at two point four million. All these other lines seem to be like in law are comparable to their operating, but we don't operate. Two point four, I think, is that inclusive of all the TIB grants and all this other one time?
It's his operational, it's it's arterial street and all those, all those one time monies. It's residential street, and then it's this couple little tiny, like his equipment reserves. So it's anything that had to do with streets and streets, yes.
It's really not representative of operating. As so much as the other ones. All right, thank you.
Would, are we done? We have a question. Do we have a question?
Derek has his hand up.
Derek, sure.
Yeah, sorry, Teresa, you are quick on the ball on that. Sorry, Cindy, thank you so much for the presentation. I thought it was amazing and and it looked really good, and I think you guys have done an amazing job. Sorry, I don't know. She ran away. Question on, I I don't know if you can share the last couple of screens. I wanted to see, was it the the pie that showed the most? That you spent out for the for the year, I think it was pool, and then it went police, fire.
Yes, hold on. I stopped and now it won't let me start again. It hates me. Go on, just a minute, Derek.
You're okay, thank you.
Cindy, could you repeat his question for us?
Question is, is he wants to look at those eyes again.
Okay.
At the very end.
And so while staff is working on that, council, I would, we were gonna, I was going to take a little five minute break at some point in the evening because it's going along.
Perfect. All right, Derek, here I am. Hold on. Are you seeing my screen again, Derek?
Yep.
Okay. So your question was. Here, so. Is this what you wanted to look at?
Yep.
So this particular one, if you look at the original one, this twenty three percent. Sorry, twenty three percent will be for the pool construction. Of that money. And then it pops into thirteen percent for police. Eight percent for fire. Five percent for finance. Three percent for admin administration. Public Works Building Planning, all in one big thing, seven hundred and seventy. Courts at two percent. I see what you're saying. I don't have a street there. Is that what you're saying? Did I omit street? It's down here, it is. So streets.
I think I I'm I'm guessing this is what Paul was talking about with everything being so small. Is that what he was kind of referring to?
Yes, he he was the street right here, but this street piece, the seven percent. Is not just street operations, it's also revenue they're expecting for some some arterial street grants. It's the residential street money that our. Utility payers pay the four percent on on their electric and and natural gas. And that's what the majority of that is. So seven percent of this revenue pays for that, but it's. Yeah, it's seven percent.
Gotcha. And then what what is all entangled in in finance and and admin?
So finance has is is a lot of stuff in it. So I have, I have the finance department. That also carries our IT. Bill, I'm also including debt service for our general obligation bond will be in there. That's about that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So any, any, anything that no one, no other department claims lives with me. So that's kind of what those are, but those are the three big ones. I our IT budget, the finance budget, the general obligation debt. And then any extra money that they might spend out of, not extra, out of the original capital facilities fund. So the REIT taxes that people pay when they sell their home, the city gets a portion of those taxes. And those have to be used for capital purposes, for governmental capital purposes. And usually budget that as spendable. Even though the council at this point hasn't made a decision to spend any of it. And if they don't spend it, it rolls into next year and it just grows until they decide to use that on something, but. I typically budget that as spendable in case something comes up that the council chooses to use that for during the year.
Gotcha, okay. And by the way, I wanted to start with, as running businesses, this is the worst part of my like day. And for you to like do this for a day job, I commend you because I hate doing this. Going into the reserves, really quick question. We, I think we were, we were right below the valley if as per capita on the on the measure one. And I'm just basing that off of of what his graph was. What what does the valley have in reserves? Are we right in par with kind of how they are, twenty five percent or?
You know, your, your, your reserves are interesting in that, excuse me. So general finance, so the the GFOA. The Governmental Finance Officers Association, they they do a lot of study on fund balance and a lot of reserves. And what they recommend for reserves. And there are some cities that go as low as like fifteen percent for their reserves. And then there are some that are higher than twenty five percent. Cheney landed on twenty five percent for a very specific reason, and that is because we don't have the ability through our sales tax. To recoup money if if there's a downturn as quickly as other communities do. The valley has. Valley has a lot of sales tax generators out there. I mean, Spokane Valley, they've got a lot of car dealerships. They've got things that once.
Home Depot.
And they get a lot of sales tax for that. You know, Cheney's sales tax is very different since ours is focused very much on our building activities here. So that's one of the reasons that we, as a city, decided on the twenty five percent level. Because it keeps us very steady. A second part of that is, is when we looked at these financial policies that we just passed last week. There's a lot to be said for the strength of your community by the amount of your reserves. So your financial strength is looked at by what those reserves are and what those policies are. And really twenty five percent was a minima that they recommended in things like, you know, for that. So we don't do that on every fund. The general fund, the street fund, parks and recreation. Light fund. Garbage fund and water fund all have a twenty five percent reserve right now. And you know, this council's worked really hard to get there. So we've had to maybe not spend some money we wanted to spend because we knew how important it was to have that twenty five percent reserve. And so they worked hard to get to that place. And I'm really proud of them and I'm proud of everybody in our community for for that. And I think that leaves us financially in a good spot. And I would not recommend going beneath that. It's just too hard to come back. We've gone beneath that in the past and it takes years to build that back up. Years. So I would love to see that, you know, stay where it's at.
One, one other thing I would add to that is when we have economic downturns, such as when we had in two thousand eight. When the country was struggling. And the city of Cheney has a cyclical revenue. You know, certain times of the year, it's, we're getting money and other times of the year, we're not getting as much money. We need to be able to pay our bills and to pay our employees and. There are some cities who end up having to, during their sort of slower revenue parts of the year. They actually have to go out and get a loan to pay their employees, and we never want to be in that situation. And we have been close in the in the years past when we've had those downturns. So we've, you know, sort of eaten away at that twenty five percent over time or whatever it was at the, in a given year. And it's, as Cindy said, it's taken us a long time to build that back up. But we never want to have to get a loan to pay for our employees in the summer.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things we do, Derek, is we use that twenty five percent reserve as our cash flow, as as Teresa just talked about. So, you know, we get taxes twice a year. So, you know, I have to be able to pay those people outside of that, and that twenty five percent helps give us that kind of cash flow that we need. Throughout the year to make sure we can pay all those bills. Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, and and like I said, I I run three businesses, so I know what the the nightmare of of all this is. I I just didn't know where the the twenty five or or what the other cities were doing too. So that's where I was just kind of coming from there. But again, thank you so much for the presentation and I appreciate it. Thanks for answering the questions.
Neither did I.
He said, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Cindy, he said, and Cindy's doing a great job.
Okay, if I may, I would just like to add to that. You know, this is my, my last year on council. And when I first came on and I saw the twenty five percent reserves. And I remember thinking to myself, that's way too high. We don't need all of that. And I used to question it, and I, I don't know, I probably questioned you directly. And then. You know, this is, we're looking at now ten years and COVID hit. And we had those twenty five percent reserves. And it saved us from the headaches that we were talking about. That we didn't have to go out for loans or do anything else, and I publicly. Mounts, I appreciated. Your insistence on us having those type of reserves because, I mean, it was a clear example of why. And I appreciated that and I appreciate you, so, yeah.
They were helpful and they can be helpful in those downturn periods to know that you don't, you don't have to make immediate and maybe. Drastic decisions. You have time to thoughtfully think through a problem. And that helps get you there to thoughtfully think and address it and research your your options, and it just gives you a little time to do that more responsibly.
All right. If there are no public comments for the fifth time. Close the hearing. Thank you, Cindy.
Absolutely. I'll start for your next hearing unless you're going to have your break.
Actually. So what do you have to?
No, I was just going to introduce the.
No, let's, since it's an hour, and we've been here doing this an hour and a half, let's take a fast five. And give everybody a chance and then we'll come back and we'll be more attentive to the next presenters. And let's have Spacy give us his two thousand twenty four department budget presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protown and council members.
Can you open the public hearing?
Well, Seth?
Can you open the public hearing, please? It's a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm opening the public hearing on public safety presentations.
Okay. Thank you, council members and. Mayor Protown. This presentation I put together this year is a little different than the ones I think you've seen in the past. You'll see that the overall budget is about a hundred and six thousand dollars less than the ones previously, and there's a lot of reasons for that. Couple of things is the capital budget. I'm not looking to improve the building. I'm looking to spruce it up a little bit, so I didn't ask for our money to convert the Sally Port into a gym or office or anything. So you'll see some differences compared to last year. The mission for the for the Cheney Police Department is to provide professional, responsive, unbiased law enforcement services to everyone. That works, plays and lives in the city of Cheney, in the community of Cheney, which reaches out further than just the confines of the. Of the city limits of Cheney. We've been called upon numerous occasions to go outside the city. To assist other law enforcement agencies like the Spokane County Sheriff's Office and Area Heights Police Department. The department overview, it's we're a full ti, a full service law enforcement agency that provides routine emergency investigative police services. Mission. The department has embraced a community policing philosophy. Mission, the department has embraced a community policing philosophy. Uh which is proven to be successful in addressing crime and its causes and quality of life and its issues and the issues. Uh community oriented policing involves forming partnerships between the police department and the residents and businesses. Uh these alliances um identify problems, issues, and needs. Uh then formulate a pr- and implement courses of action to address. Additionally, the city of the Cheney Police Department has developed a collaborative agreement with the Airway Heights Police Department to help with the mental health crisis that that we both face. And there'll be a slide later on to kind of describe the mental health calls we've been on. I compared them from uh two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty three, up to year to date. The accomplishments for uh uh twenty twenty three is we uh uh fully incorporated the two uh two thousand twenty one police reforms uh act into our policy and procedures as well as the department's culture within uh without sacrificing services or responses. Um we explored various police officer recruitment strategies to include uh hiring new officers. For for many years, we really focused on trying to get lateral um officers. Um and that has proven to be successful, uh but I wouldn't say totally successful. Uh the the hiring pool for lateral officers has has dwindled. And we're competing constantly with Spokane County Sheriff's Office and the City Police Department. So new hires uh are a viable option for us. And I think, and I think it's gonna prove me uh right, that once we have our new hires uh on the street, they'll probably stay longer and not transfer out. Currently have one in the academy and they're in the process of hiring another one, he's going into his um uh required uh physical, psychological, and polygraph process. Um we're looking at the feasibility of uh expanding, we're gonna look at the feasibility of expanding surveillance systems in other key locations around the city. That's that flock system that the um uh Airway Heights Police Department has. And the the benefit of that is it links in with other flock systems within the county. And will will be available to the uh the real time uh center, which they're establishing down in, down in the county right now. Uh replaced uh two patrol vehicles and one uh administrative vehicle in two thousand twenty three. We got delivery of those, I think sometime in um April and they're, they've been issued out. The goals for the up- upcoming year, uh we're gonna realign the command structure for the department. Um we had a, the command structure, structure previous was a uh the chief, a captain. Um a detective sergeant, two line sergeants, and then patrol officers. The captain's position is gonna be uh changed to a lieutenant's position and the lieutenant's position is gonna be, primary responsibility is gonna be managed uh the day to day uh patrol functions and reduce overtime and oversee the day to day uh function of the police department. Um I'll still maintain uh the oversight of the investigative unit. Um because I think that separation is beneficial and besides, I was a detective almost thirty years. So uh that's the goal of the department, uh as far as staffing goes. We're gonna explore the feasibility of transitioning dispatch from to the Spokane Regional Communication System. Uh we're in the process of doing that right now, we've had many, many talks. And it is our hope that um by doing that, it'll increase the the safety of the officers within the the West Plains because we'll all be on the same frequency. And it will uh reduce the cost for the city of Cheney. Um there's gonna be two patrol cars that are gonna be um replaced this coming year. Uh we've been slowly replenishing our fleet. Yeah, we still have three vehicles that we purchased back in twenty thirteen on the on the road. And those are uh becoming problematic and and they're not cost effective to run, uh but we can't get rid of them. Uh and even when we get these new ones, we're not gonna be able to get rid of them. We'll still have vehicles there that we'll, we'll use as in in emergencies and when we have to uh have other vehicles worked on. Uh we're completing the final phase right now, in fact, uh Executech was out today programming the new computers. We're gonna transition to laptop computers into patrol cars uh that the officers can take out of their patrol cars and then use inside the department. And eventually we'll do away with our, our desktop computers. Uh this is beneficial because while officers are on scene, they can write their reports. Um or if they're down at the hospital, they can generate search warrants and it's, it's just more practical. Uh and we're in the process of of having that. Uh we're looking at the future of the SRO slash yes uh program within the schools. Uh right now, um the only uh contribution that we have is that we support the yes officers. For example, today, um Officer Walters and uh Officer Christensen uh walked through the the schools with BS officers, but that's really not much of a contribution. Um earlier this year, we did have Officer Walters participate in the POW program, which is the uh the uh Police Activity League. And we need to get our faces, the Cheney Police Department faces um in with those kids so that they understand that we're there to help them and to and to be somebody that they can depend on. Um so we're exploring that possibility, of course, right now with our staffing levels, that's not feasible. Okay, we're gonna expand, uh uh continue to explore opportunities for grant funding and community outreach programs. Um uh we, the uh Airway Heights has hired the uh the grant writer um Elise Manati, and she's been very successful in getting them. And she's more than willing to help us get grants as well. And if we were able to get those flock cameras, it's gonna have to be through a grant. Um and those grants are only good for one year and then and then we would have to come up a way to fund them from, from that point forward. Um we're gonna uh establish a list of potential applicants. In the past, we have waited till somebody left and then we started looking to hire somebody. So we're always pulling ourselves up by the bootstraps to kind of get caught up. Right now, we have a uh a list of people that we've already put into background. So should an opening come up, we can place a phone call and replace that, that person as quickly as we possibly can. Okay? All right, here's the, here's what the uh uh org chart looks like at this time, you'll see that the uh there's a vacancy for the lieutenant's position. I put out the um promotional process to promote somebody to lieutenant. And then we have an opening for sergeant, and then there'll be another opening for sergeant. The only people that are, are eligible to test for lieutenant are two sergeants. So one of them is gonna leave uh in that lieutenant's position and then we'll have two openings for sergeant. And uh I put together a uh, a new pro promotional process that is a weighted process and goes through several phases and at the end you have an aggregate score. Every officer will then know um where where they did well and where they might need improvement. And then we'll have a list, should an opening come up, we can just go to that person instead of playing catch up again. Where we're, we're trying to fill a slot at the, at the drop of the hat. It'll be a ranked list, a score evaluated to it, and then we can just take the next person. Okay, goals for twenty twenty four is to realign the structure, oop, I went the wrong way. Okay, here is the, the budget for uh um the overall budget for the police department for uh twenty twenty four. You'll see that there's a, a significant reduction of about a hundred and six thousand dollars uh between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. And the, the biggest um contributor to ex- expenditures is obviously salary and benefits. Um you'll see that the overtime is pretty significant. We get a hundred eighty five thousand, a hundred fifty thousand of that is dedicated to patrol. And then there's twenty thousand with uh that's dedicated to dispatch. Uh another ten thousand that's dedicated to programs and that's out of the uh Criminal Justice Fund. And that programs would be like domestic violence uh programs. If an officer, for example, has to spend overtime working a domestic violence case, we can draw from that account and it doesn't impact the patrol. And then there's another five thousand for transport. Uh we still have a contract with Lincoln County, so if we, and quite frankly, we haven't had to transport anybody in a long time. The, the courts have done a remarkable job about uh not sending people to, to, to jail. Um but we had another five thousand, so our, our budget for overtime is a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Okay, and here's the dispatch budget. And uh you'll see that it's also significantly less, about sixty one thousand dollars less than uh two thousand twenty three. Currently, we have only uh five FTEs in dispatch. And um there's no plans right now and there's nobody in the hopper to fill a slot if one came open. Um if, if, if it's difficult to, to find a police officer to hire, it's, it's ten, it's more difficult to find a dispatcher. So it's really difficult to, to, to fill that, those holes. And again, uh wages and benefits take up the majority of that. And then um you'll see that the uh the overtime for the, for dispatch is like twenty, twenty thousand dollars. Supplies and and other services make up a pretty significant chunk as well. And those services um involve like licenses and, and uh equipment that we need on a day to day basis within dispatch. The uh Police General Fund uh for twenty twenty four. Um again, wages um increased a little bit, you'll see that the tw- it's increased from the twenty twenty three. The reason for that increase is uh changes in uh wages and benefits. Um the uh, the officer's got a um uh, I think a nine percent increase from last, from the year before. And that's uh that contract is good for two years, so I'd expect it to be an increase for next year as well. The other uh part of that would be professional services and charges, that would be things like um doing the uh background investigations, the polygraphs, and uh communication travel for training and operational for rentals, like uh for example, our Xerox machine. And uh we have a rental down at the uh, down at the range as a porta potty. It costs me like a hundred dollars a month to, to have that down there and then miscellaneous. Okay, Patrol General Fund is two point seven one million dollars. Again, the vast majority of that is in wages. Uh then there's some uh charges for uh for office supplies, uh disposable office supplies and small and minor equipment. Um and other services, again, uh travel and training, uh repairs and maintenance. With the uh, with each officer having a car, the maintenance uh costs have gone down from the, from the years prior. So a- and that, and that doesn't surprise me at all because that has always been um demonstrated over the years that they take better care of the cars and not put as many miles on it, it calls for less, less wear and tear on the vehicle. Okay, for the station costs, again, this is for the HVAC system, heating and and air conditioning utilities and maintenance and repairs, thankfully, we haven't had to have a lot of repairs. I know we had to have a roof repaired like last year or before last, it was leaking, but uh thankfully, we haven't had to have a lot. Okay, and the firing range, uh the vast majority of this, this cost has to do with targets and equipment um uh to put the targets together and then the uh the porta potty, which accounts for like zero percent of the cost. Here's dispatch, um we have five uh assigned to dispatch. Um I do know that at least one of them is looking for employment elsewhere, so we'll be down to four perhaps in the not too distant future. Um and this is a significant change from when I first came to Cheney. Uh when I came here in two thousand eight, I think we had twenty six employees and, and probably six of those were dispatchers. And it's just dwindled away over time. Like I said, it's very difficult to find somebody who wants to be a dispatcher. Okay, the wages for the FTEs uh for dispatch uh amounts to like five hundred sixty four thousand. Um that always makes up the uh, the vast majority of the, of the cost. Um and for twenty twenty four, it's uh about a hundred thousand less or about fifty thousand less than what it was a year before. The Criminal Justice Fund pays for a lot of things, it has the capital lease for the vehicles. Um and those cars that we do get, they're on a lease uh program uh that once it's paid off, then the cars belong to the city. Uh supplies and equipment like ammunition and firearms and everything else uh criminal justice related comes out of that. Uh the ten thousand dollars for overtime for the special um uh programs overtime comes out of that budget as well. And it is also about fifty thousand less from the year before. These are the equipment reserves, we uh ended up with about twelve thousand four hundred in reserves uh balance. Uh the beginning balance was sixty nine six, special program seventeen eight. And interest was two thousand, so we ended up with about eighty nine thousand dollars in equipment reserves. Um and we lea- we don't touch that, right? Cindy, the reserve stayed reserves. All right, uh discretionary funds. Um the first two items in the discretionary requests have to do with increase in insurance and IT costs. Our, our contribution for insurance increased by nine thousand one hundred dollars. Um which is gonna bring our total up to like fifty five thousand dollars a year. The uh IT increase is about thirteen thousand seven hundred. Uh and that's gonna bring our, our um balance up to sixty three thousand eight hundred. So I'm asking for uh um that to be approved so we can pay for those increases. The next one is uh we started uh transitioning our older rifles uh back in twenty twenty two. And this is just a continuing, a continuation of that. Uh there's four rifles left that have to be uh replaced and these rifles that we're asking for are shorter. And they can accommodate a si- a suppressor. And the reason for that is uh it's been demonstrated a lot that when officers discharge those rifles with uh in, especially i- in, in real life conditions, it damages their hearing. Um and uh on another note, uh our firing range is relatively close to the city. And I do get calls when they're practicing down there. And with the suppressors, it will lower that concussion and make it a little easier to, to tolerate. Here, here we go, the, the the total cost for the uh, for the new weapons, the new fi- uh rifles is six thousand nine hundred ninety two dollars. That's with the suppressors. The next uh discretionary item request is um for the uh, the police vehicles. When they ordered the uh, the last four vehicles, they ordered them without radar. Well, I can tell you that traffic enforcement is a priority within the city of Cheney, as it should be everywhere. And uh speed is one of the primary complaints. So I'm asking that we um order these uh radar units to have them installed in the four vehicles that we just got. And that will help us with our traffic enforcement. Uh the next uh item is for ammunition, it's the same amount that was asked for last year. Uh we have now eighteen commissioned officers and uh each one of them has to be proficient in every tool that we have. Uh in particular, the, their firearms. And uh just shooting holes in targets is not training, it takes a lot more than that. And that's why we shoot in all kinds of weather and and we have to do low light shooting as well. So we have to try to, try to mimic real life situation as much as we pro- practically can. Um so the, the amount of ammunition I'm asking for, for this year is the same as we had last year. And it costs uh eighteen thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. And we're bringing two more people um that are, they're gonna use up some of our, our reserves. So this is an important item that we, that we need to follow through with. The next is uh, we already ordered from the last budget, the um, the kinetic energy weapons. Uh the forty millimeter single shot launchers, those are used for um um crowd control and for also high risk situations. Under the Police Reform Act, there's uh there's a statute specifically addressing the use of less lethal um munitions. And those, those munitions have to be used when practical and when available. And when we ordered the uh, the weapons, uh the uh, we didn't get the uh, the ammunition with them. So I'm asking for the ammunition, um and quite frankly, we ordered those weapons and we haven't taken delivery of them yet. Uh they told me it was gonna be in, in the middle of October and now we're, we're coming close to November and we haven't received them yet. But what I, what I'm asking for in this, in this discretionary item is not just the actual weapons but also a tool that we can reload um some of the, some of the rounds, so it would reduce cost on practice. Hey, there's another um less, a kinetic energy weapon called the Bean Bag Run. And those are fired out of a twelve gauge shotgun. And I'm asking for ammunition uh for those as well at, at the cost of um six dollars and sixty three cents a round. I'm asking for a hundred of them, so it's like six hundred and sixty three dollars. So combined total for the two kinetic energy um uh weapon ammunition is about four hundred ninety, uh four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. And this is the uh, this is the RCW that I was referring to, that um when practical and appropriate that um less lethal uh tools be used as opposed to um lethal tools. And of course, the object is always is to, is to take somebody into custody without causing any physical harm. Um and that forty millimeter round uh does less damage than that shotgun. Larger, small, a larger surface, uh slower and um. Larger, small, a larger surface, uh, slower and um, can get the job done without creating. Severe injury. Okay, um. This is a investigative tool, this is called the CLEAR uh, program, and what that does is it helps track uh, information. On finances and it also has the ability to track if somebody's incarcerated somewhere around the country. It helps us locate people who've been uh, reported as missing, it also helps us with fraud investigations. You can see uh, money transfers and and so forth, uh, it's a. It's on three, you have to buy into it for for three years. Uh, the first year is twenty eight hundred dollars and then the next year is another like twenty, all total at the end of three years, it's it's just short of ten thousand dollars. So for this budget cycle, it's like, it's like uh, two thousand nine hundred dollars, then the next one is going to be about two thousand one hundred. At the end of that three year cycle, if we choose to, we can terminate the program, but I will tell you that. It is a very valuable tool and something that the the Real Time Center has utilized. And right now, um, the city of Cheney has three missing persons and one of them we've been looking for for a long time and and very concerned about. Uh, and this would be one more tool that we could utilize to try to help help locate that person. Okay, here's the actual breakdown from year to year, this year is twenty eight eight, uh, next year is three thousand twenty four and the following year is three thousand one hundred and fourteen. And like I said, at the end of the three years, if you choose to, um, we can terminate. Uh, the next three items have to do with the mental, physical and spiritual health of all of our first responders. Um, in conjunction with the fire department, um, I'm asking that we fund. The uh, the mental health component with that, with the program called Shop Talk, I think it's very useful. Um, the uh, the therapist that puts that on, she comes out to the city of Cheney, it's actually grown. Uh, we have our firefighters and our police officers attending it uh, weekly. And uh, I think it's a very, it's very beneficial to the mental health of uh, of the people that that respond to our needs uh, on any given day. Um, there have been other um. Uh, agencies that have participated and I have spoken with the mental health professional that that puts this on and she's very encouraged by the success that we've had. So and the cheap, it's five hundred dollars a month, uh, for the whole year, it's six thousand bucks. And we've been currently paying for it with borrowed money from training funds from the sheriff's, uh, from the fire department and from the uh. Um, the chaplain's fund from the police department, the chaplain's fund is something that police officers donate to and then we've been taking it out of. Uh, the fitness equipment, uh, I know last budget season, we uh, authorized the officers to work out on duty. That program is going pretty well, uh, we have four officers that that do it routinely and they go up to the. Fire department and utilize their equipment, but unfortunately, the extra use on the equipment has taken its toll. And I uh, I'm asking that we um, be allowed to purchase a a new treadmill. Um, for their physical fitness center, uh, and this would be like a commercial grade um, treadmill, because if we get one of these that's sold at Walmart, it's not going to. Uh, so this is kind of a middle of the road, I I I checked them out in the run between four thousand and ten thousand dollars and this is kind of a middle of the road. Okay, um, we have a uh, a police chaplain. And uh, we want to convert him into a uh, first responder chaplain. Um, so I'm asking for three thousand dollars and he's a volunteer, he doesn't get any money out of this whatsoever, he does it out of the goodness of his heart and he really cares. And uh, we're asking for him to become a first responder chaplain, so we would have to rebrand him instead of having the uh. The police department badge on him, we would have a different uh, uniform for him and then send him to uh, whatever training may be available. That would be specific to every fire department and the police department uh, together. Okay, now this is a, this is a big one and this is something that that I've been talking about since I came back. Um, we want to become accredited again and that process is lengthy. Um, it is laborious and uh, and it's not free. Uh, they have inspectors come into this, into the department and they go through all your, your policies and procedures and the law approves. And we have to pay for those people when they come here and there's a computer program that I I'm going to have to explore, but we may already have it, I'm not entirely sure. Um, I was told the other day that we had it, um, but I'll have to check, but that computer program, if we don't have it. Is going to cost us about five hundred dollars a year or something like that and accreditation program, I think is is beneficial for many reasons, first of all, it opens the doors for. For um, um, our uh, grant opportunities that the agencies that aren't accredited won't be able to access. And it also gives us checks and balances, it gives us um, a outside set of eyes that come in and. And and make sure that we're doing things up to contemporary professional standards. Okay, and this is uh, this is the upgrade for the uh, for the building, uh, our poor building looks, looks a little haggard. And we don't want to put a lot of money into it, uh, because I know someday that that this this, it's not going to be there, there's going to be a. A justice center out in West Plains or something is going to replace it, but I think it has to look different than it does today. Um, so what I'm asking for is the materials to make that happen, what that would, what that would entail is essentially paint. Uh, paint the exterior, uh, paint the interior and and make it look a little nicer than it is. Um, drywall, uh, to put a false wall in the front so we can put our pictures up in the front. And um, the labor for that is going to be volunteer labor, uh, I am willing to do it. And my brother, God, God bless his soul, has agreed to come help me and I'm quite certain that I can get other people to come help me. Um, give the uh, give the department a facelift. Okay, here's the calls for services, uh, for two thousand twenty two, we had seven, and this is just year to date. And year to date for two thousand twenty two was seventeen thousand eight ninety nine, we're very close to that. And uh, over the last week, I would say that we were probably at least even with it, we've been extraordinarily busy. Um, and what I want to emphasize about this is every year it's about the same. I mean, it it ebbs and flows slightly, a few hundred here and there, but every year it essentially runs the same. And these are just the dispatch calls, these aren't the phone calls and other things that we are dispatched to. Okay, um, this is something that that I I decided to put together as opposed to using the neighbors reports, I think this is. More accurate and gives you a better idea of what we're actually doing, the neighbors report I thought was a little confusing and most people didn't know what a neighbors group eight. Um, violation was, even the officers didn't know. Um, but this gives you a little better idea of what we're doing, the uh, the total number for two thousand twenty two was eleven eighty three. Year to date, we've had, we've got eight hundred and sixty two total calls, total incident calls. Uh, these numbers are uh, the incident report numbers that the officers actually take out. Um, and and for all of uh, two thousand twenty two, they had eleven eighty three, year to date, we had six hundred or eight hundred and sixty two. I, I, like I said, I think we're going to probably be pretty close to where we were in two thousand twenty two. Uh, the other tail of the tape is uh, crimes against persons. In two thousand twenty two, we have three hundred and sixty in crimes against persons, year to date, we have two hundred and fifty four, that's a good thing. That means uh, some of the things that that are going on within the city, it it's helping. Um, domestic violence cases for two thousand twenty two, we had uh, two hundred and forty and for year to date, we have a hundred and thirty. And those numbers, again, they fluctuate a great deal, there's no rhyme or reason of why somebody commits a domestic violence offense. Um, felony, violent felony assaults in two thousand twenty two, we had sixty and so far this year, we've had. Uh, thirty four and I break it down, I broke it down by felony assault, sexual assault, um, child abuse and attempted homicide. Both two thousand twenty two and two thousand twenty three, we had, um, uh, in two thousand twenty two, we had four attempted homicides case. That was uh, all out of one case in two thousand twenty three, that was also out of the same case. Um, so yeah, it it covers, it covers a broad spectrum of of different crimes that are committed. Uh, mental health responses for two thousand twenty two was seventy seven and for two thousand twenty three thus far is forty four. Now, I'd have to qualify that a little bit because a lot of those calls go to the same person over and over and over again. Uh, we implemented the mental health professional um, co-responder unit uh, about. Two or three months ago and some of the peoples that that we had been dealing with on a regular basis, they were able to get them. Into some kind of program or get some, they're no longer in the city of Cheney, so that has, that's made a big difference.
Your year to date, uh, is that the end of September?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Uh, let's start with counsel, counsel, questions? You're good? Okay, uh, anyone from the public have questions, yes?
Um, so I have two last questions, uh, disappointing kind of going in order, you're. Um, I wonder, you said the total dollar amount for the budget is down compared to last year, does it include discretionary budget?
Uh. Yes.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
Um, and so the total.
And discretionary but uh, request this year or less?
Okay, so from the Criminal Justice Fund, General Fund, discretionary, but all together, that total is less than. Where are surveillance, you talked about wanting more surveillance, there are.
Oh, they're on first year, the ones we have currently, they're on first year, they've been there for many, 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 many years and then you replace them, so there. There's one over like the first and G, um, gosh, the first and uh. The nine hundred block of first, I think the six hundred block of first, they're all in the first year and then there's, there's one in.
Um, what is the cost difference between hiring a lateral officer and a new officer?
Oh, significantly, um, let's say a a lateral officer, officer comes into the department and he's had. Um, ten fifteen years on, he comes in at top step, um, a new officer comes into the training level. And it's a significant change, it's it's, I don't know what the actual pay is, but it's significantly different. And then they don't get a up to level one patrol officer.
Okay, what about like onboard, because the pain where they have to pay for like this person, someone that's already trained. So obviously the pay is different, although it seems like there's a benefit to how they train and operate because they're more qualified. By experience, also there, you know, the uh, trial, so it's good though, but in terms of that front onboarding cost.
The front onboarding cost for a new hire?
Yeah.
Um, the academy charges four thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, and but that is less, if we brought somebody on board, um, that had ten years on. For a top level, level six, um, they would make more than that cost process. So, uh, in, the difficulty to bring in a lateral on is, uh, first of all, the pool is really shallow. Uh, and we're competing with everybody. We're not the only ones that are having difficulty finding qualified laterals, uh, Spokane County Sheriff's Office, they're significantly understaffed. Spokane Police Department significantly understaffed, um, so that pool is 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 shallow and um. To help get over that hump and get somebody going, we could be stagnant like this for a period or more. Um, so it's better to get somebody on board, get them going, but by the end of nine months, then you have a police officer. After they go through the academy and go through the field training program and within nine months, we should have a police officer.
Okay, thank you, um, so we were, so it sounds like so Nate Bonning was a captain as far as I'm aware, he's currently on administrative. Still, um, it sounds like they happen to be in the, being replaced or anything, talking about this difference of only had.
Uh, pay, first of all, and it really had more to do with. Prior meeting, my paper, Cheney is prior, and we had a, I think, there was no. Or I think it was a potential issue, we are taking it back where it was before. And separating the responsibility, um, the competence position is going to be primarily to oversee patrol. And make sure that uh, the overtime budget comes under control, make sure shifts fill, meet the needs of patrol officers. Before, um, there was, when I was here at the cap, I oversaw the detective's office, but I oversaw the whole department. Um, in my current capacity, I'm going to assist. That was different than what it was before, uh, in in the effort to keep the uh, the pay slot under control. Um, before I returned, the pay slot was in at seventy, I mean, what I mean, I investigated, we had seventy plus cases. We're down to twenty six cases today and because of this collaborative work effort. And the detective's office working collaboratively with other people to bring those. Of course, they have mine here, it's half or open anytime, we got like a question. So that's what's really changed is the the philosophy of how the department's.
So we might not expect to see the overtime that.
Well, it's actually, the overtime is uh, significantly less than it was in. Twenty two, uh, the overtime for twenty twenty two is three hundred and thirty four thousand. And I think year to date, we're like two hundred and eleven thousand with two months left. Um, and and I would say like twelve to thirteen thousand, that would be better if we didn't have the gray fire. Uh, once the gray fire came, I think that took up about thirteen thousand dollars. Take that out of the equation, then we were down under two hundred thousand dollars year to date through our.
Um, you talked about a new promotion process, is that, is that possible, can you be able to share with the council members or the public?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Um, so the, on the slide, the Police General Fund administration, a hundred and fifty four thousand, so there's. Your salary is that, and how much, so the officers got to raise through their, their contact, how much do you get?
I don't know, if any, I don't even know.
I believe that we budgeted four percent.
By the fact of this, we clarify. How many times have officers been registered, practiced charge rifles?
Oh. Thank you.
Um, and then the kinetic energy weapon. So you talked about the forty millimeter beanbag round. So this is from an apartment of justice, um, a beanbag round severely injured or filled in a wide range of ways. They cause ground one death a year since their introduction in the U S, a round can hit the chest, break the roots. Then the broken bones, the upper, a drop to the head, breaks the nose, crushes the larynx, larynx. Or breaks the neck or skull of the subject, a strike in the abdominal area causes from beating. For effect, the celiac session, which tends to show freezing for per beat. Um, and then also the calories are taken, there's other stuff around, bringing that, so I'm a little confused about the claim that it would.
You're confusing, forty millimeters, if the beanbag, a forty millimeter case, if you're on forty millimeters.
Okay.
Slower, larger, less impact, the beanbag round, that's why they call it less lethal, not less than lethal. Absolutely, they can cause severe injuries and death, um, that's why that you have to train with them. And there's a certain uh, distance that you have to be before you can deploy them because of that. So through training and through, and that's why I'm asking for a hundred rounds, so that they understand the difference now.
It's very.
If you're Cheney, I know uh, for a fact, we've deployed beanbag rounds three times. And on all of those, uh, they they got welts, uh, one individual, um, was uh. It it grazed him, so he bled on the stomach, uh, but nobody suffered any uh, significant uh, physical injury. Uh, and that has to do with how far they were, I used to give a use force report on on those kind of cases, you have to have an evaluation. Because it's a use force and part of that, I would determine how far they were at the time they deployed it. And then we photograph it and document the injuries and everything, so there are two different i- items, one is a forty millimeter and the other one's a. It's a stabilized beanbag round shot out of a forty inch shotgun.
Okay, yep, and so I believe one of those, the beanbag round being deployed with the development label, they, they go. Um, I was wondering if you could just clarify, and I know we kind of had this this conversation before over email. Um, the situations, maybe you might use these less legal, um. Be like, it's kind of a crowd control, like obviously we live in a college town, everyone is familiar, um. With our attendees on neighbors who are um, college students, but for example, like my folks live next to. Um, growing up was surrounded by rentals, now few of those have, um, turned into family. Specifically, I mean, it's like, you have a shop at them, you find bright lights, if there's paint on your yard, garden hose, and so I. I'm just not clear about the type of situations there, college students or. And so I, I'm just not clear about the type of situation there, college students or field leaders. Or what are these situations where crowd control is, might be needed and for what would be justified? The fire round in the crowd where there's a lot of people who might get injured or wear something.
Um, two things. Uh, first of all, the wouldn't shoot you, probably you'd have to be a color.
Point of order, what does this have to do with the budget?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'm not sure what this has to do with the budget. This question is not have anything to do with the budget.
Four on seven, throwing rocks and beer bottles at us and something like that when we're being personally attacked and yeah, we probably could, although we didn't, we didn't. Um, but under situations like that, the other re- the situations that would cause that is um like the individual that was up at here, he's, he had a knife and he wanted us to shoot him. Well, he, he's coming at you with the knife. You gotta make a decision on what you gotta do. And thankfully, we had an officer who was thirty feet away with a beanbag round and shot him in the stomach. And he dropped a gun. We got him into custody and did he go to jail? No, he went down to a mental health facility. And detox. So those are the situations that I'm talking about. It's not the run of the mill, um, college crap party that's loud and obnoxious. It's when there's real danger of somebody getting hurt uh under those circumstances.
Okay, so it sounds like it's really part of the individual's case too, than the crowd is obviously. Whereas even with the crowd that potentially had direct aisle, there were, there was excessive, the housing stuff of that kind of.
Right. That's what we always, absolutely.
Yeah. Um, and I guess means this more generally in terms of the public hearing, I really appreciate you answering those questions. Um, and the information provided here, and it's really encouraging to hear that we are, you know, the budget is decreasing, spending less money. Um, and I guess, and I, this is, this is a hard question to ask because I know our patrol officers are really hard for men and women and they're really dedicated. Um, and seeing how much, you know, they have been willing to work overtime. Um, like given, you know, like the patterns of misconduct or being threatened or investigation, um. I guess like when it comes to the other departments of the city, there's a really clear tangible benefit and outcome for both, right? Whether it's, oh, we have these great streets or we have utilities, uh, or we have these parts and next programs. And I think we talked, we talked about all the safety, even, you know, with the fire, like, oh, they're responding to the medical emergency, right? Of the, of tangible things that we can see. We talked about kind of the perception of, of safety and oh, it feels safe or you've prevented things. But I think it's that hard to measure. And so it's just looking at the budget, looking at how the police spending this is the overall budget. It's hard from a citizen's perspective to see what is enough we're getting. Because I, I mean, imagine part of what the response might be is, oh, well, never know what was prevented by having these officers and having a more proactive approach. Um, and I understand that and it's still a significant amount of money. There's a significant amount of money that needs to be talked about. Like the domestic violence, obviously, we don't have any domestic violence services in town. There's no victim advocacy or people aid. Shelter housing, um, there's none of that. And so when you think about the number of folks who are on Facebook who are saying, I don't have enough food to feed my kids, it's all, I guess I checked it. Um, the kinds of the things the city is spending money on, the teenage, the citizens, and the feeling of safety from having more and more and more officers. Who are more and more well-trained on more and more weapons. How do we, I mean, that question sort of helps us probably think about the value of that, right? Obviously, this is a need, but to what extent and how can we continue to allocate funds in a way that's.
That's actually a very valid question. As far as the domestic violence, you're correct. We don't have um victim advocates out here. But what we do have is uh two officers that are dedicated to the domestic violence unit. And what we have, what they do is they respond to a domestic violence incident, the night of, whatever, or they get it referred to uh the following day. Typically speaking, if it's a, it's a full-blown domestic violence where somebody gets incarcerated, the uh, um, domestic violence specialist will make contact. First of all, they make contact with the suspect, the person's taking you to custody and let them know that there's a protection order in place and you can't keep contact. You can touch the victim, go over the resources for them, we have a packet, they give, we give them and then we take a phone call for victim advocate to see if they're able to see them. And then uh at what time, what they, and then we do follow-up after that to see if they actually did uh follow. So while we don't have resources within the city achieving, we have uh connections outside the city achieving that specialize specifically in domestic violence. Uh, and we, if, but for example, we just did this a couple of weeks ago, we had a connected domestic violence victim who, and I don't understand how this happened, but she had to fill out a little protection order. While she didn't know how to do it, so it was, it was rejected. Um, so Officer Walters went to her house and wrote her protection order out for her. She was able to present to the judge. So that, uh, yeah, I, I agree that we don't have all the resources here, but we have access to it. And every officer on the department has that, has a copy of that packet. So when they're out doing their follow-ups with them, they hand them to that, they hand the packet, it has the contact information for Officer Walters and uh. So, and anybody else can, can give them the help they need. Frank, what I think has helped me that we are now more aware. Uh, letting people see us out here, but uh we still have a, a relatively large number coming in. Our officers will need to contact most people uh as often as they can, as often as they're allowed to under the law. That's the difference. We changed our philosophy and how we enforce the law here. Uh, the uh, uh, for example, one of our biggest problems is, is uh underage drink. The fact that a kid sixteen years old, is that a bigger deal? No, not until they go out and displace a tenant apart. Other than uh, we had one sixteen year old pitch in the, he was so young, he didn't know. Um, but collateral. Denver's drinking is a big, a big deal in the collateral damage. So if we take care of it as a minor. And we aver- this uh, my, my, my. Um, the other thing that's undifferently is I'm more proactive than I thought. Uh, and it sounds, it sounds mundane, but it's more than just speed. Uh, people who commit major crimes drive by. So maybe traffic stops out, you're gonna need to. Traditionally, that is, that is what has happened. A lot of our major incidents in the county in the city have occurred because somebody came from outside the city. That's the, as we start looking at these numbers and we start addressing, um, uh, it's called intelligence-based patrolling. Uh, when we reconfigure our, our dispatch, that's going to be one of their responsibilities to give me the data. So we can better allocate our resources to the areas. And then we'll be, and then we'll have something tangible. But right now, we're, we're, it's, I'm angry on this.
I think the one thing that the council can consider from, from a law enforcement perspective, law school thought is. What we can, so I think it's wonderful and healthy.
I'm not gonna talk about it. You what?
Let's train our officers to be in. Another approach. Professionals who are trained and educated and certified in those fields and serve those. So this two, I mean, you could do it multiple ways. The combination, right? It's putting a co-responder, you know, co-responder. But I think that's a question I really love that the council can consider is, do we want to continue to say, oh yeah, law work, we can be jack of all trades. Everything and all these kinds of things for, are there some things that you really feel well and other things better than by other professions? Train in those areas and have like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Well, we've got Derek, are you laying on the floor there? You wanna? Did you still have a question?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to hear. I don't know, I can't hear, I don't know if anyone else online can hear or not. We can't hear what the, what's being said. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
He couldn't hear it. That was a problem, so.
Do I need to yell? I'm, I'm leaning into my microphone or my, my speaker so I can hear what, what people are saying. But I bet I look like I'm laying on the floor. Um, I guess, yeah, chief, thank you so much for, for presenting um what you did. I think the, uh, what you've done is amazing. It looks like the budget is really good. You've dropped it down quite a bit. Um, I guess my one big question uh would be. Um, of the dis- uh, the, the dis- this, the, the funds that you're requesting. What percentage would measure one cover and what would, and what wouldn't that cover? If, if you know off the top of your hand, uh, up top of your head?
No, I have no idea what it is. Four different criteria that it would cover. I don't, I don't know what specifically in our budget it would tell.
So, um, this is Cindy and maybe I can respond as that, as he gave our presentation today, I just took notes, okay? One point seven billion, thirty years, that's a calculation, one point seven divided by thirty. Uh, he gave us then forty percent of that. And then he gave us the one point three three year percent. It's about three, the very basic calculation, it's about three hundred thousand dollars. So, um. I don't know that that would be allowed to be supplanted. That means that we could not use that money for current expenses. See how criminal justice money works.
You may probably end up paying it back to the county in jail fees.
Perhaps, but I'm just, I mean, how that's criminal justice money typically works is that we get it. And then, um, it has to be for a program. And it can't be like, I can't go to, okay, I'm gonna take three hundred thousand dollars and give it back to my debt roll fund to put over here. I have to use it for a new law enforcement program. So, you know, police has very basic programs. They have personnel, they have equipment. They have uh training and, you know, they have a facility. So it would have to be for something within that, probably a program within the police department that they currently don't have. If we were to get it and there again, I don't know how much money that will actually bring us. I'm, basic, basic calculation, maybe three hundred thousand dollars.
So I guess the question to the county would be, is, is the, is the funds, are the funds fungible? To where if it's an existing program, can we use these new m- measure one funds to offset our costs? So that we can use them for other things, right?
So I asked, I asked the gentleman that was here that question and he said he was not sure and he was gonna come back and speak to, um, to their people and get back to you.
Gotcha, okay. Yep, cool. Thanks, chief. Appreciate it.
I should have, uh, I didn't know how long this conversation, which ended up to be a conversation, uh, was going to go. I should have had. Both parties up at the, um, uh. At the podium, at the microphone, and that was my fault. I apologize and uh we'll just go from there. Well, I learned, I learned a lesson. Any other persons on uh the call Zoom uh have a question? If not, we will go to the fire presentation, please, and thank you.
Mark or Tom, would somebody be able to help me? It's pretty embarrassing as the youngest department head. I don't even know how to navigate Zoom.
It's okay. Let's hope you'd never have to learn. Let's hope it goes away.
Todd told me I get five minutes and then he's gonna start throwing things at me.
Yeah, there you go. He's gonna start throwing, he's gonna start throwing lighters at you.
Alrighty. Thanks, Mark. Well, good evening, everybody, and happy winter as it's starting to snow out there, I believe. Oh, I know, I know. Bad news bears. So first I'd like to thank Chief Bechtel for packaging up the three items with his discretionary request on his end. We sort of flipped a coin, but they're both uh, uh, very, very important topics between uh public safety with police and fire for the three initiatives. So thanks, Chief Bechtel, for taking care of those for the fire department as well. The equipment piece, uh, as a reminder, all that workout equipment that we have was purchased through a federal grant several years ago. So that was money that we got through the, the AFG or Assistance to Firefighter Grant and that equipment is starting to show its age.
Can I, can I interrupt you just for a second? Derek, can you hear?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So, you know, you, you're gonna see a lot of the same slides as what I've given in the past and I still think it's very important. I know you all as council members understand what we do, but I still encounter a lot of the citizens out there on the day-to-day that's, that's awestruck on exactly what we do as a fire department. Um, you know, as you'll see, seventy-two and a half, seventy-three percent of what we do on the day-to-day is EMS or medical calls. We still run into a lot of citizens that think that all we do is fire. And as society is evolving and more problems continue to arise, when we don't know what to do with it, they stick it on the fire department to try to figure it out through nine-one-one. So what we do is everything. We're small but mighty. Where we like to focus is on the community, the CFD way. Uh, we're, we're dedicated to that cause and that initiative for a safe, effective, and efficient service delivery. Empower and prepare the community in regionalization and collaboration of those causes and initiatives. Here's our hierarchy, basically myself, and then we have the ten firefighters and then Ms. Olga Montiel, who's been with the city a really long time. I'm not sure exactly how long she's been with the city. Uh, I was under the auspice that she was going to retire last year. Uh, thankfully she did not, but uh basically it's myself and Olga who works Monday through Friday and then everybody else is on shift work. So we lost our public education volunteer, a gentleman who had retired, I think, four times in his career with a plethora of knowledge. Um, he was able to achieve what he wanted to achieve to get a volunteer pension, uh, and then some, and then he wanted to enjoy the rest of his retirement years. And then the EWU Cadet EMT program, I'll talk about that in a, in a, in another slide. We're still averaging around two years with our volunteers. So every year, we're rotating out one-third of our volunteer firefighters. Which is still a little bit better than the national average, but not too much better. You can see in the top left-hand of the screen there, in twenty twenty-three, we, we landed close to nineteen hundred emergencies. We're very close to that so far this year. That is an estimation for November and December with a one point four percent trend line and what we saw this year. As I indicated earlier, seventy-two percent of what we do is EMS, twenty-eight percent is fire. That's a little bit low in the West Plains. Uh, as airway heights is generally around eighty percentile. But with having the university and the larger buildings around here, some of our, uh, commercial buildings as well, going on to a lot of fire investigation calls, uh, alarm calls, things of those natures. Will, will bring up our fire to EMS call ratio. If you look at the EMS side, eighty-five percent of that is medical where the other fifteen percent is trauma. Um, falls, slips and falls has always been, since I've been here, one of our number one, um, trauma medical calls that we go on. So any sort of initiatives we have, especially with our, our elderly population, getting out there, assisting them and helping educate them. A lot of times we find through society that folks reach a plateau in our life where they become in denial, that maybe they, they need a cane to get around or a walker to get around. So we have a lot of, a lot of avenues to, to reach out to that population to help with that cause. Hundred and twenty-one calls for, for altered mental status or suicidal ideations. It ranges from seven-year-olds to seventy-year-olds. It has no bias. Um, so anywhere from twenty to thirty percent of our total medical call volume has a psychiatric component to it. You know, and as a firefighter, we're not trained clinicians. We, I, I, I don't know how to fix that. We're gonna show up if you call nine-one-one. But unfortunately, like what Chief Bechtel was talking about in his presentation, you know, a lot of times we have to take these patients and we have to hand them over. And the only way we know how to do that in the fire service is to provide you a ride in an ambulance down to an already congested hospital network system. Uh, so, you know, we're waiting four and five hours right now in the ER departments to try to figure out where to place, you know, folks that, that meet this criteria. Um, that, that's having a hard time coping in life. You know, we like to track our cardiac and our death uh related uh medical emergencies there to make sure that we're keeping up on our skills and abilities with that. And then you can see that uh abdominal pain and respiratory sort of fall into that. I like to track that information more for training purposes as well as consultation with our, our medical advisor, Dr. Dirks, Travis Dirks. On the fire side, um, a lot. On the fire side, um, a lot of those are, are fire alarm activations, predominantly with Eastern Washington University, we do see a spike when school sort of starts back in again, we'll start to see a spike in that, sometimes those are called what we call false calls, which the system accidentally activated for no reason that we can determine, a lot of times they activated because it worked as it was intended to work. Uh, a student was cooking something on the stove, it got burnt, the detection noticed that, set off the system to, to alert us. A lot of public, uh, service calls, that's sort of that gamut of if we don't know what to do with it, or how we're gonna classify it in the computer system, we stick it under a particular code there, but, you know, from animal rescues to people being locked out of their apartments, locked out of their vehicles, um, I, I'm, I'd like to keep a better eye on our vehicle accidents, so those are slowly creeping up here in the city of Cheney, and I'm gravely, uh, concerned about our vehicle to pedestrian ratio, I know that doesn't seem like a lot, six, but, uh, you know, when, when you, when you get young folks walking the streets with their cell phone right here, and they don't even stop to look if a car is coming, then that's, that's a bit of an issue that we need to keep an eye on. We're up to eighteen structured fires, thanks to this morning, had a house fire this morning, and thankfully we were able to get that knocked down and taken care of pretty quick. And then, of course, as you know, you know, our wildland arena with the vegetation fires, that's primarily out in Fire District Three, and our other neighboring agencies, which we're always willing to go and help them as well. Right down the middle, that's very important, we take a look at how long we're on scene, and what's our average response time, as you are well aware that the National Fire Protection Agency, NAPA, is our guiding documentation across the US on how long, uh, what's the golden standard, if you will, so I feel better that we actually, uh, did much better on our average response time of five minutes and fifty-one seconds, however, the golden standard is five minutes and twenty seconds ninety percent of the time. We did not meet the goal, or we were at fifty-four percent of meeting that goal, so as our call volume increases, um, we're starting to see that time slip a little bit more and more, and I have some more data for you. Call that the pulse of, of operations, if that's someone's heartbeat, uh, they'd probably be in a hospital right now, but that is the pulse of January through October, you can see that we do have some days throughout this year in 2023 where we average twelve calls a day, twelve emergencies. The overall average is five, uh, I think I went too fast here. Is five and a half emergencies per day, so if the average emergency is, is, is lasting twenty-seven minutes, add another ten to fifteen minutes for the firefighters to get back to the station, to get the truck back in service, get all their equipment back in service, forty to forty-five minutes, at five and a half hours or five and a half calls a day, you're, you're looking at, uh, eight to ten hours of their day just spent on emergency operations, and not working on programs and training, and those other areas that, that are just as vitally important. I wanted to tease this out of the data, spent some quiet time on this, it's a topic that, uh, you know, Chief Warbach and I with District Three talk about a lot, that little thing called mutual aid, so it doesn't become moochable aid, and I'm always wanna make sure that we're not mooching off in District Three. Uh, so how does that happen within the city of Cheney? Well, a lot of that is doubled-up calls, you can see that about twenty percent of our total emergency call volume is, is a doubled-up call, that's two 911 calls coming in at, at, at almost the same time. And so we're making it to half of those calls, we might not be making it to the other half of the calls, because we're only set up and designed to go to one, one emergency at a time with our fire engine. Um, it's not quite as bad, we're averaging about three hundred times a year where we get doubled up, and a lot of times they end up getting this guy from, from the comforts of his office seat to go help on those, on those medical calls, but, uh, happy to do that, but we're trying to look at creative ways moving into the future to maybe right-size some of our resources to meet the demand and, and where that demand is at. I know this slide's a little busy here, this is where I'm estimating that we're going to land in 2023, we're creeping up on two thousand emergencies, when I got here, not even six years ago, we were just at thirteen hundred emergencies. It, it's a slow increase in demand, as we saw after COVID, post-COVID, we had a huge spike, I was hopeful that maybe that spike would downclimb, but it's not, it's continuing to increase. Uh, society right now is in flux and in chaos, and people are just calling 911 for everything. Uh, in the top right of that screen, your five-year average by month, I like to see what our busiest months are, and historically, October, well, that did not line up, October has been historically our busiest month of the year. Um, the, the bottom portion of that is just 2023, and what those little red arrows indicate is that, did that month exceed last year for that same month, hopefully that makes sense, so you can see January, February, March, uh, June, um, those are record-breaking months of, of all the historical data that we have for the, like, the last fifteen to eighteen years. Um, April, May actually went down for those months, and then I'm estimating Nov- November, December, based on a 1.4% increase through the year, uh, that those will also go up based on last year's monthly call volume. However, over a ten-year spread, we got a nice steady three-point pers- three-point-six percent increase. If you tease that out over the next ten years, we probably will be somewhere around twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred emergencies per year. And feel free to stop me if you have any questions, please, for anybody. Uh, incidents by the hour, why is this important? Well, it's because we get those doubled-up calls and we're getting hammered at the same time, I, I, I feel like sometimes the citizens conspire around here to call 911 at the same time, just, just to test our abilities, but, uh, it, it's pretty interesting, interesting to look at this data in a college town to think, when do you think the busiest time of the day will be? And it's actually from, you know, those business hours. If you look at the average, we're right around seven o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock at night. So it's during the business day that we are the busiest in Cheney with our emergency responses. Of course, the right-hand screen is just four years of data to, to give us a little bit more accurate information with that. Same thing with the, what days of the week. You know, I would think living in a college town, at Friday nights and Saturday nights, we would be hopping, not that we're not sometimes, but the average is actually Wednesday. Our busiest day of the week is on Wednesday, then Tuesday, then Thursday. This year was a little bit of an anomaly with, uh, Friday in a, in a surge and a bump. I didn't go back through and try to tease out why that is, because those numbers were so close between Thursday and Friday. Uh, but historically, over the last four years, Wednesday is our single busiest day of the week. So if it's October on a Wednesday, between noon and, and 5:00 PM, we're probably gonna get an emergency. Wanted to tease out some demographics for you. The mu- the, the age group of those patients that we're able to actually get their age from, not every patient are we able to actually get their age, sometimes they're unwilling to tell us, sometimes they're incapacitated and they're not, not able to tell us, but for those patients that we're able to tease that information out, uh, you can see that the, the, the twenty to twenty-four-year-old category still seems to be the highest amount of individuals that we go to. Um, and then, of course, uh, this year as well, our sixty-five to seventy-four-year-olds, it's important so we know where to, where, where targets of opportunity are, to where we can engage the public, uh, with education and campaign programs to help with that. Our mutual and automatic aid compared to what we go out and help others and what they come in to help us. Uh, I started off with the top blue, is what we give, what we gave to other agencies, what we gave to Fire District Three, twenty-one incidences compared to fifty-five times that someone else came into the city of Cheney to help us out, that seems a little lopsided, but if you start to think about it, when we get called out into District Three, it's because we got a workinghouse fire, or we got a significant brush fire, and we're rolling with manpower, resources, and spending four, five, six hours of time out there on their landscape. The majority of the time when they come into the city of Cheney, it's because we got that doubled-up or tripled-up medical call, and they're sending one chief officer in a pickup truck for twenty to thirty minutes. I, I'm not able to see their side of the data, so therefore I wasn't able to tease out what that looked like on their end. I'm sure that that became an issue, Chief Warbach and I would sit down and have a, a chief-to-chief conversation, but not once has Chief Warbach ever, ever, uh, showed any concerns with me that we are mooching off of District Three, but I, I think it's important to make sure we're being fair neighbors, is, is what I'm trying to achieve with this slide. I presented this information last year, sort of the top ten, top eleven places, the frequent, most frequent places that we go to, I thought it was very interesting that Cheney PD landed on the list this year. Well, that's a testament that, uh, they're out and about doing patrols, probably some suspected DUIs, and they're asking the fire department to come down to do a blood draw. So we went down to Cheney PD twenty-four times this last year, and, uh, that's a testament that they're out, out in the field doing their thing and making sure that they're, they're stopping people from making horrible mistakes with dire consequences. Twenty-eight percent of our total call volume is to these eleven locations. Why is that important? Well, if you look at it on a heat map, you always wanna put your fire station sort of in the center of, of your heat map. That goes back to meeting that five-minute and twenty-second response time that NAPA establishes as a goal. So as new fire departments develop and new locations are, are being looked at, um, they use the heat map a lot to figure out where's best to right-size and place your fire stations, I still think that we, we have a pretty good centrally-located fire department.
Could I ask, why does Rockwood call you to come help them? They have doctors.
It's, it's, it's mind-boggling, both Rockwood and the CHAZ, and when we walk in as EMTs or paramedics, they scatter, like, and, and you, you, you would ask yourself, but, you know, it's very common in the pre-hospital versus the hospital setting, I, I was married to, I'm still married to my wife, who was a nurse for thirteen years, and she always racked her brain, well, that was just stupid, why you would package a patient that way, and you would do this in the field, and I'm like, well, honey, we don't have twenty, thirty thousand dollars in X-ray equipment over our back, and people in white coats and stethoscopes and, and, you know, how we do things in emergency medicine versus how nurses and doctors do in medicine is completely different with patient treatment. Their product, protocols are, are no different, if a patient is having an emergent need, a heart attack, or a stroke, or something dire, they dial 911, we show up, and they walk out of the room and, and we treat the patient until the ambulance gets there and, and loads them up, but.
And they get, they get.
Yeah, it's, it's mind-boggling. So if you're ever on an airplane and someone hollers, "I need a doctor," you should probably say, "I need an EMT."
Right, yeah.
So here's our budget, and I apologize, I know we call it a budget presentation, for me, it's a lot more of the analytics. Um, and, and I'm always willing to change the slides based on what the community or you all need as, as our elected members, but got a few budgetary slides in there, you can see the difference between 2023 and 2024. Um, a little bit of a difference in, in, in salaries and benefits this year, that was already pre-negotiated on a three-year labor contract with city management, city leadership, and, and, and the labor group. Um, but everything else is staying fairly consistent with that, with our operations budget, our overtime. Uh, Cindy had alluded to earlier, you know, we're really seeing that reserve go up, we had to unfortunately tap into that twice this last year, if you remember when we asked for a new air compressor that broke, and then the purchase of the District Four brush truck as well. But, uh, yeah, th- those pieces of equipment just are just getting more and more expensive. I'm being told a brand-new ladder truck is anywhere from 1.2 to 1.8 million dollars today, so saving up for that is definitely, uh, money, money well saved. So, in my attempt to not ever have to come back to you all and say, "Hey, a fifty thousand dollar item just broke, and I'm sorry that I didn't identify it, and I'm sorry that you gotta make a decision on the fly." I sat down with the three battalion chiefs, said, "We need to come up with a different process." Well, actually, the three battalion chiefs came up with this, something that they could identify, what's truly critical, what is something that's not as critical, or, or that we consider urgent, and something that just needs serious consideration. It's a roadmap for us to determine the level or severity, and to identify things that we wanna lean to into the future, to give you all a better understanding of, of the criticality of, of the nature. So we're not sidelining you, coming to city council, asking to spend, uh, a ton of money. But I was really happy that the battalion chiefs put this together, we're gonna start tracking this moving into the future, uh, and that'll give us a roadmap for future discussions on our needs. So as you can see, that landed or played into what we were requesting for our discretionary request items for 2024. You see that priority on the list there on the left, and I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't let you know that, you know, we're going to have future ongoing needs and wants and desires, and you know, like any other department in the city, but, you know, we, we wanted to make sure we, we highlighted what we're sort of tracking over the next five years, those items that we need to give consideration to, like the ambulance. We got a really good ambulance with a brand-new cot for $3,300, a smoking deal on it, but it's showing its age. We should probably make a decision, do we wanna replace and keep an ambulance, or we just wanna, we wanna get rid of it and, and not have an ambulance, which is totally acceptable here in the city as well, since we have a contractor, but those are some of those decisions that I wanted to place before you. Uh, unfortunately, unlike Chief Bechtel, I didn't lay each one of these discretionary request items, uh, completely out. I'm willing to go over each and every one of them, but if you have questions, I'm happy to stop, but, you know, our number-one most critical item within the city is, is a full-time fire marshal. Um, every fire department in the nation has a fire prevention fire marshal umbrella. We are the only department in Spokane that has full-time staffing that does not have a dedicated full-time fire marshal. Um, maybe the better way to, to look at a fire marshal is no different than, than the detective with the police department. A fire marshal is someone who's skilled and trained, has been through, uh, the hierarchy, uh, to a certain level within their career, that they understand how fire works. Uh, and then they also have a unique skill set to be able to interpret and read the fire codes, to do pre-fire plans, uh, to look at building plans, contractor plans, and also to go out and do, uh, inspections on facilities to make sure folks are, um, are, are keeping up with, with the standards, that things don't become substandard, so as our emergency call volume has a slow uptick in it, I'm starting to see our program starting to go back down. Um, so the programs like training and fire marshal, uh, are, are very important to the overall health of the city as a whole, so we're asking for, and I know it's a big ask, but um, got a lot of phone calls this year from, from angry contractors and business owners saying that, you know, my, my fire plans have not been looked at, they're holding the process up, it's been three months, I've missed out on contractors, I'm losing money, what in the world's going on, so uh, something I, I ask you to take a serious and hard look at, please. Um, the rest of those are items that, uh, that we feel are critical and urgent for your consideration as well. The EWU Cadet EMT program, I think it was an extremely beneficial success. We just scratched the surface with that program, uh, we were able to get out and about and, and actually do a couple great things with the program to help in a couple different ways and different initiatives. Uh, we actually got a couple of those students on board as volunteer firefighters. One young lady told me the other day, she's going through our Volunteer Fire Academy right now, she said, "I think I found my calling." She's going to Eastern to be an exercise something or another, degree in exercise something, but she said she really loves the fire department. That one there, and, uh, and so it, it's refreshing to hear these young men and women actually, you know, ta- take a look at that and really love what they're doing to help the community. So we got plans to, to start up another program in January, and, uh, just to continue to grow and build that EMT program. All right, I got four more slides here for you, so our training umbrella, you can see that, you know, a- as we had indicated in the past, for some reason, the fire service, it's training, 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 if you're not putting out fires, you better be training how to put out fires, the state levies two hundred and fifty hours a year just for firefighter training, there's not another profession that I can think of that's anywhere close to two hundred and fifty hours a year, so training is very important to what we do. Um, uh, both of our paramedics had to go through their full entire three-year recertification. We were able to accomplish that to make sure that we articulated that they completed all their training, then they had to go through some reevaluations with Dr. Dirks, our medical advisor for the Cheney Fire Department. Uh, the EWU CFD Joint EMS Training Center, I had no idea how arduous this was until I actually got to see the process, it took three months for Jeff Anderson and Nate Lawton with the university to sit down, fill out an entire packet of information, send it to our local EMS council, and then they kick it back to make corrections, then we send it back to them, then the doctors finally approve it, then they send it to the East Region EMS Council, who had questions or concerns, and then finally it got sent to the State Department of Health. Um, and we found out recently that the State Department of Health has approved that Eastern now can be an EMS training center. So that's a really big accolade, they can now take that and they can expand off of that to do advanced EMT, paramedic, or paramedicine, if the university would like to go that route. Shop Talk has been extremely successful, um, I've been too chicken to actually go sit down with the clinician and unload all the skeletons in my head, but I know a lot of the fire and police officers have, and has been extremely beneficial for them, so I will muster the courage to go do that myself. And then we facilitated the first-ever Cheney Fire Training Conference in February, uh, the, the Benevolence Fund, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) with the Cheney Fire Department, um, actually amassed $10,500 through, through donations and through membership, and we hired a gentleman from Florida who came up and spent the entire weekend giving us sort of our own conference. And so they would like to try to expound upon that every year, because as you know, it, it costs a lot of money just to go somewhere to a conference. Um, not, not just membership fees, but your hotel, your room and board, your airfare. So that, that was a really nice initiative that we were able to bring to the West Plains. So that, that was a really nice initiative that we were able to bring to the West Plains. Talking about our fire marshal or fire prevention and our public education program. Uh, maintain child passenger safety checks. Not a lot of fire departments do that anymore. That's one of the first things they dropped. As emergency demand goes up, they start dropping those little initiatives. And actually, one of our lieutenants went out and got trained on how to actually properly install a car seat. Which you, you wouldn't think as a dad or as a mom, it'd be that, that, that hard to do. But these gentlemen crawl in the backseat for an hour, hour and a half. And after they install the car seat, you will never want to take it back out again. We're able to get two different grant initiatives that we were able to use. Uh, working on some big projects there with Eastern. A lot of, we're starting to see a lot more of the, the solar residential projects, which I think is a great initiative to have. Um, the one thing that we, we're working on that I've identified and, and we need to do better with is going out and doing our inspections. We are required to actually get out and inspect all the commercial resi- uh, and business, commercial and business properties. Um, at a minimum of once a year. And we've been doing a horrible job of that. So I divided that up, took it away from the fire marshal and said that all three shifts should be going out and doing very basic, simple fire inspections. So we're ratcheting that program up. Maintenance program, as you're well aware, we received a $175,000 grant from the state for a purchase of a new brush truck. Which is almost be, almost done being built down in Spokane. Uh, we were able to purchase the brush truck from District 4. And then we built two new programs into our CAD, our computer system to help us do a better job of tracking the fleet. You know, I, I'd love to be able to come to you and say, hey, this year we spent X amount of money on the ladder truck to keep it in service. I don't know that off the top of my head. I should. If you ask for it, I should be able to provide it. Moving into the future, we'll be able to do that for you. So where would we like to focus in 2024? Continue to invest in our first responders as our number one resource. By looking at it through a 360 lens, a chief, chief Bechtel had talked about. Focus on that city fire marshal program, because I'm starting to see that flounder a lot. Uh, find creative ways to make sure that we're, we're meeting the demand that's, that's being asked of us in that umbrella. Explore creative ways to be able to adapt, uh, adapt quickly. You know, how do we do that? Well, we might have to restructure our administrative load. Right-size the department tasks and rank structure. Uh, by, by rank instead of by individual shifts. These are, these are things that other fire departments have done. Uh, employ some training for city stakeholders and leadership. The great fire was eye-opening for me. And as your city emergency manager, I owe it to you to make sure we're better prepared for those situations. So I'd like to, I'd like to scratch that off and maybe enter into some good conversation with Eastern as well. To see if we can do some collaborative initiatives with Emergency Management and Emergency Operations Center. Maintain our focus with joint training endeavors. You know, any sort of regionalization is value-added, not just from a training perspective. But from a, a cost-effective perspective. And of course, preserve whatever relationships we have. Continue to work on those. With that, do you have any burning questions? Happy to answer any questions. Except for yours.
I'm sorry. I was thinking, um, Derek, yes, please.
Of course I have questions. Can you, do I need to yell? Do I need to yell? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Derek. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, my, I guess my first question would be, um. I had, I had a couple of jokes about it, but if it's just you and nobody else can hear, then I'm not going to continue on. My, my big question would be is I saw in the normal budget that the, uh, EWU has a contract. With the, um, the, the fire department and it was going into the general fund. Is that typical and normal? And or what is the percentage that the fire department receives from that? Um, that contract, I don't know if that is a question for you or for the finance committee.
I'm Derek, this is Cindy. That's a question for me. So yes, we do have a, an EWU fire contract with the fire department. The fire department is paid out of the general fund. So therefore the contract comes into the general fund. There's a piece of that, there's $40,000 of that that gets removed and put over into the fire equipment reserve. To help with some equipment needs that they have, but they're paid from general taxes and then the general fund. And so therefore that money to support the fire department comes into the general fund to do that.
Gotcha. So it goes in the general fund. And I'm, you're very clear on my end and I don't know if you're clear on mine, so I don't know, I don't want to be yelling at you. The contract comes in and then 40,000 of that contract goes to the.
It's called the Fire Equipment Reserve Fund. And it is a reserve fund in place for fire equipment.
And that's what goes into the fire department's budget?
No, the whole, so. The fire department is not self-funded. So the fire department can't fund everything that it needs on its own. And so it, so they have revenue sources. They have, um, they have the Fire Equipment Reserve Fund, which is their biggest revenue source. But they also have some EMS levy that comes in. They have some other smaller ones. And all those added up do not equal the entire amount of the fire department's budget. And so the fire equipment, the contract with Eastern comes in and just helps to fund the fire department. Does that make sense?
Yes, to a certain extent. Where else does the money go?
Well, so the general fund is made up of, you know, taxes and fees. So the fire department. You know, they, yeah, they get the fire quid, them, sorry, they get the contract money, they get the EMS money. And then the rest that funds them comes from sales taxes and property taxes.
Right, but if it, so the EWU contract, what does that entail? Is that just fire or is that?
That's just fire.
Other things. So then, so why doesn't the EWU contract go straight just to the fire department? Why does it go to the general fund?
Because the fire department is part of the general fund. The general, the general fund pays the fire department. So that's the expense, that's the check we write, is out of the general fund. And the money to help support the fire department comes into the general fund as a revenue to help pay for the fire department.
And I'm gonna. What's, uh, you don't know this offhand. I don't expect you to. What would the, what was that? What's the fire department EW contracts? What do they pay? What would that be?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, Derek. I'll have to get that information for you.
Okay. So I'm guessing, does the fire department get all of the EW contracts?
Yes, they do.
Okay, okay. But it's just, it goes into that big pot and then it gets feeded through.
It goes into that big pot and it is allocated over to the fire department.
Gotcha. Okay. My other question to, uh, Chief Jenkins would be, um, and I'm, and I'm hoping that this is a. Full city issue. What, what are your, what's the percentage of fentanyl-related issues you're having? And is this a concern that the shi- city should have?
Okay, I understand your question, Derek, is what is the percentage of fentanyl-related?
Correct.
Emergencies that we're, we're seeing. I, I don't have that data off the top of my head. I do know that we are probably twice a month on average administering naloxone or Narcan. Uh, some of that is, is, is because we've got fentanyl in the system. Some of that's a different type of opioid. Some of that is just because the patient is presenting that we can't figure out what's going on with them. And, and administering naloxone is not going to harm the patient at that point. So I, I could definitely tease out how, how many, how many times a year are we administering or buying Narcan or naloxone? And I can give you that information, but we are definitely seeing a, a slow increase on narcotic uptakes, uh, here in the city.
Is there? Something we, and I say we. Sorry, City Council. Is there something that we as, as, as business owners and or peoples of the citizen, uh, uh, citizens of the Cheney? And or city council can do to help combat that? Issue that's going on, uh, with? Uh, that drug?
Well, it's, it's speculative. Uh, Derek, to be honest with you, it's, it's not just a Cheney problem, not just a Washington state problem. It's a nationwide problem that we're seeing narcotic uses going up. I think it's part of a systemic problem, uh, overall. You know, we, we've got a mental health crisis. Uh, we, we've got problems with folks not even wanting to adhere to, to, to laws. We've got law enforcement issues as it relates to being understaffed and underfunded. Uh, and, and that all sort of feeds into why we've got, you know, a homeless program, uh, folks that are homeless, home, you know, folks that are in, in dire need. Along with a, a heightened drug usage.
Uh, I'm going to put you on the spot with this measure one question. Do you know if? Any measure one funds would be able to be allocated to you as a department for this issue?
No, I do not know, Derek. Uh, we're, we're trying not to count any chickens before they hatch. So with that, it sounds potentially good in theory. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like from the county, uh, uh, to the city of Cheney. Um, i- if it passes at all.
Awesome. Uh, appreciate it. Thank you.
I think the people on Zoom could hear it better than we could hear it. And I apologize if you could not. But we're going to go from there.
Alrighty.
Um, so any questions for the chief? Cool. If there are no more questions from the public. I will close the public hearing. And thank everyone for their presentations tonight. I know you've spent a great deal of time.
Very good.
Working on it. All of, all of you. And lots of other people who aren't here. Okay, resolution F-192. Little housekeeping business.
Yeah, I'll cut my presentation short. Uh, we went out for bids for, uh, obviously, you know, the, the reservoir one, um, we're trying to get repairs to. So we went out to bid to actually remove the, the concrete lid. Uh, we had three, uh, three contractors, uh, submit their bids. Uh, wrecking ball demolition was, was a little bitter. I wasn't too thrilled with the name, but they seem to be qualified. In removing the lids and they've had past experiences with that. So, um, I'm recommending with a continuous on the contract, because we did add a new section on our, our contract. Uh, that deals with disbar and suspension. So we'd have to go through that process and make sure that they, uh, they meet that. So it would be recommending, uh, uh, just to not have a mere sign until we, we check that box. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We are now going out, uh, this Thursday for the actual lid. And, and, and seeing what we can do to get that, uh, get that geo, I, I always call it like a geodome lid. It's a very lightweight aluminum, uh, lid that will go on top of that reservoir. Uh, hopefully we can get that delivered around the April, May and have it installed by next year. So that, that is really the goal on it.
So this is a BYOL project. Okay, I, so the two, the price did not include the lid.
You don't know the.
Okay, thank you. All right. Staff, or excuse me, um, council, any questions?
The honor of the Works Committee reviewed this matter in depth. It's the amount, this bid was less than I thought we would get. So I would make the motion to approve resolution F-192 with the inclusion of the department checkup.
And yes, okay, cool.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any final questions?
That well is not operational until this project's done, correct?
The reservoir. Yeah, no, the reservoir has, has been taken out. It's, it's has not been operated in almost over a year.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. We could have put you at the front of the agenda with that county guy. Why didn't you jump up? All right, other businesses, as, as. Staff, what's going on?
I'm going to make this quick. I know it's late. Uh, number one, uh, just aquatics facility update. Um, probably going out for bids this week for the demolition of the existing pool site. Which is a great, uh, thing to move the ball forward. Uh, we are meeting weekly with NAC on, on the design. Had a good meeting this morning, talking a little bit about, um, I'll say the filtration system options and, and some things that need to be. Kind of factored in to the actual, uh, floor planet, floor, floor plan and, and design of the facility. Uh, public safety response. Uh, as chief said, we had a structural problem this morning. And the great thing about Cheney is the collaboration in Cheney. This wasn't just a fire department response. We had Cheney police there. We had EWU police there and we had our light department there. Great to see these groups all work together, you know, to, uh, take care of a very dangerous situation and the response time was, was phenomenal. Um, winter weather, as was mentioned earlier, everybody, slow down, take it easy, please. And then finally, Todd will talk just for a minute about yard waste bins.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we will attempt to keep the, uh, uh, basically the recycling center open with the, with our. Forty-yard roll-offs out there as much as we can. I think the weather is going to be hopefully short-lived in the real cold. Uh, where we have problems, if we have moisture in, in the yard waste, they tend to become ice balls during that real cold weather. But we will, uh, attempt to, to maintain that operation, which we typically do through the weekend of Thanksgiving. As far as clean green, this is, uh, I believe this is your final week as we move on, uh, to that end. But if you do have any extra, extra clean green, if you can get down to this, down to our recycling center and dispose of it, great. If you can't, just leave that green being out, been out and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out whatever that per charge is. So I know we have a few of them that, that will probably continue to rake leaves as much as we can. These are starting to fall now as fall weather's coming.
Thanks very much. Uh, I got nothing except to apologize again for a couple little things that could have gone smoother tonight. Uh, Paul? Vincent?
Really quick, thank you all. The presentations were absolutely great tonight and especially commend you, everyone on the Q and A. It was also very, very good. Ballot's are out, please get out and vote. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, all of you. Um, just wondering why we're not able to hear people on Zoom? Do we have any idea? First time. Yeah, yeah. I know, okay. I don't know, I don't know, maybe.
Isn't that like a speaker thing?
Uh, Mr. Ryan?
Um, if anyone noticed, we had homecoming and. All the years that I've been involved in it, this was probably one of the best years as far as attendance and people get involved. And the amount of work the alumni office and other people at the university put forward to, to make things happen. An awesome fireworks show after a really awesome victory. And, uh, so yeah, it was, it was fun. So, yeah, some little, some little. Hotspots here and.
Caught a few things on fire, eh? That was.
That's it.
It's damp out there.
Oh, I'm sad. I missed that.
Anyway, Dan.
Uh, thanks for the presentations. Uh, that's all I got.
Uh, great job, staff. I thought that was excellent. So keep it up. And then, uh, my last thing would just be, since we're heading into this wintry season, uh, look who you can help. Probably have a neighbor that needs their sidewalk, snow taking off their sidewalk or off their driveway. I just want to encourage the people at Cheney to serve one another well.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
We're gone.